Good afternoon. This is June 17, 2025. Ready to meet the Santa Barbara City Council. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Madam Cook, would you call the floor, please?
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Santamarin.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Mayor Ross.
Here.
Mayor Portem and Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
And Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
All right, very good. Then we have a ceremonial item to read.
National Pollinator Week.
Okay, this is National Pollinator Week, June 16 through 22, 2025. Whereas pollinator insects provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse ecosystems and are essential partners in producing much of our food supply. And whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas, for 123 years, the city of Santa Barbara has managed diverse parks, open spaces, beaches, and trails that include thousands of acres of pollinator habitat. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara has maintained, enhanced, and restored hundreds of acres of native habitats on public land and provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship and the protection of pollinators. And whereas, since 2004, the city of Santa Barbara has maintained an integrated pest management strategy and advisory committee to promote environmentally sensitive pest management while preserving assets and protecting community health and safety. This policy helps protect bees and other pollinators, which have experienced population decline due habitat loss, use of pesticides, and the spread of pests and diseases. Whereas, since 2018, the city of Santa Barbara has been certified as a Bee City USA affiliate by the Xerces Society due to its commitment to use as little pesticides as possible on city lands. Now, therefore, I, Randy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim June 16 through 22, 2025, as National Pollinator Week in the city of Santa Barbara, and urge all citizens to recognize this service. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. My name is Kristin Labonte, and I've been serving as vice chair of the Integrated Pest Management Advisory Committee, and I've been serving since 2006. And I joined the committee because of my commitment to having a safe community for our people and for our animals. And I'm very pleased to accept this proclamation on behalf of the committee and all of the wonderful staff that we get to work with. We've fought very hard over two decades to make great strides to reduce the amount of pesticides and herbicides used in our parks and city facilities. And this effort directly ties to support and enhance habitat for all of our pollinators. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, Madam Administrator, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, is there one change to the, I think it's the resolution on one of the consent public hearings, item 16? And do you want to, Madam Attorney, identify that?
Sure, or we could do it at the time.
At the time of that item. But I think other than that, there's no changes.
All right, with that, we'll move to the consent calendar. You have some items to read.
Yes, item three, authorize execution of the drinking water sales revolving fund installation sales agreement and appropriate loan funds for the Kater Reservoir Resiliency Project Ordinance Introduction Resolution and Agreement. Recommendation, the council be adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 24066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2025 to appropriate loan funds for the Kater Reservoir Resiliency Project. Item four, design services for Phase One of the Caierial and Castillo Trunk Main Wastewater Capacity Improvements Project Resolution Agreement. Recommendation, the council be adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 24066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2025 to allocate funds for the Caierial and Castillo Trunk Main Wastewater Capacity Improvements Project. Five, set a date for a public hearing regarding renewal of levy for fiscal year 2026 for the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District Resolution. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to continue the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment within the foothill and extreme foothill zones, declaring the work to be of more than general and ordinary benefit, and describing the district to be assessed to pay the costs and expenses thereof, preliminarily approving the updated engineer's report stating intention to continue assessments for fiscal year 2026 and establishing a time of 2:00 p.m. on Tuesday, July 1, 2025, in the city council chambers for a public hearing on the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment. And item 15, the consent public hearing number one, designation of a proposed development at 33 East Cannon Perdido Street, Liberal Theater as a community benefit project. Recommendation, the council designate the proposed development at 33 East Cannon Perdido Street as a community benefit project pursuant to Santa Barbara Municipal Code and Section Chapter 30.170, an allocated total of 13,042 square feet net of non-residential floor area to the project to the non-residential growth management programs, community benefit category. And in number 16, public hearing regarding parking and business improvement area annual assessment report for fiscal year 2026 resolution. Recommendation, the council A, consider any appropriate protest to the parking and business improvement area annual assessment report for fiscal year 2026 as required under California Parking and Business Improvement Law of 1989. And B, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara fixing and assessing the parking and business improvement area assessment rates for fiscal year 2026 and approving the parking and business improvement area annual assessment report for fiscal year 2026.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any item on council that the council would like to pull from consent, I should say, for discussion? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion on items 1 through 14 for the consent calendar.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Friedman, second by Gutierrez. May we have the vote, please?
That's a motion for the entirety of consent, motion by councilmember Mayor Portem Friedman.
Excuse me, Madam, that is the entirety of the consent, 1 through 14.
Yes, sorry, entirety, consent calendar, items 1 through 14 only. Motion by Mayor Portem Friedman, seconded by councilmember Gutierrez. Please go ahead and vote.
Pass you now, sweetie, thank you very much. I will open the hearing on item 15. It's already been read into the record. And if there's no discussion on item 15 and no public comment, they're correct on the line?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
None present, okay. May we have then a motion and a second on that, please? Moved by Sneddon.
Second.
Second by Friedman.
Very good. This is for item 15, motion by councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Mayor Portem Friedman. Please go ahead and vote for the recommended action. Please go ahead and vote.
Pass you now, sweetie, thank you. Now, on item 16, are there any public comments on 16?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Public hearing, very good. And any comments on item 16 from council? With that, I'll entertain a motion on item 16.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that is the one that I would just like to make a minor correction to the resolution. And that would be section three in the resolution. It should be fiscal year 2026 instead of 2025.
Okay, very good.
Insert that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll entertain a motion then.
I'll move it with the noted correction from the city attorney.
Moved by Friedman.
Second.
Second by Gutierrez. May we have the vote, please?
Very good. This is a motion by Mayor Portem Friedman, seconded by councilmember Gutierrez for the recommended action with the correction as noted by the city attorney. Please go ahead and vote.
Pass you now, sweetie, thank you. I'll close the public hearing on item 16. And with that, we'll move to reports from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. We heard the introduction of the ordinance to detach inactive services from water and wastewater system. We did forward it to council with some notes and recommendations, particularly that the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors be consulted for input, and it may see some minor changes before it comes back to council.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to general public comment, and this is comment for the general public. You speak for three minutes on any item that is not on today's agenda but still falls within the purview of this body. And we'll start off with Joseph Cortez Jr. And you have three minutes at the desk, sir.
How you doing, Mayor? I'm just speaking about the, as far as the homeless committee and everything like that. Everything's, this is going to be positive. It's all positive. Like, I'm homeless, I'm on the streets, but as far as like that, like, I like how the city is, you know, taking care of the homeless population that's out here in the city. You know, there's no harassments. The PD and everything like that, everything is, like, you know, they're working with us as far as to make sure we can get in our proper positions. So in that, you know, you know, as far as even the safety and the health, I just got over pneumonia like two weeks, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just here to speak on the fact of like, you know, facts, you know, that, you know, I'm, you know, keeping the streets secure and safe and making sure that the homeless community is protected, along with the people that are in the community, as long with everybody else, fam, you know. I think just making, making everything as simple as I can. But as far as that, I was going to say, you're doing a wonderful job as far as like organizations you have going on. And I just, you know, I appreciate the fact that, you know, everything that you're doing, you know, is kind of getting everything, getting everything in order the way it needs to be, you know, just step by step, one thing at a time. So, other than that, you know, keep doing what you're doing, and I gotta keep doing what I'm doing. I had a little rough week, but other than that, I mean, I'm just, you know, going with the flow. I'd rather say you're doing a great job.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cortez. Next speaker is Stephen Mead. Can't imagine what he's here to speak about.
Yeah, shocker. Here I am again, for solstice. Thank you very much, one and all, sort of. That's when we met, do you recall? On the streets of Santa Barbara during the solstice. We've been friends since. Hey, you guys are all friends of the city for doing this. I really got to say, you're all rock stars, especially you, because it's your birthday. You're going to be out there on our float, having some fun. Solstice starts at noon time, but never ends, folks. We've got an entire program going from Friday all the way through Sunday, so I want you guys to come on and be the VIPs that you really are. I can't say enough for all of you, especially you, because it's your first time. It must be very intimidating with all these people who know exactly what it's like to dress up like a bird, right? But we've calmed that down a little bit, and you, Smokey the Bear, we're looking to you. It's all going to be a great time, so thank you again very much. The economic impact of solstice, I think, has always been underappreciated. I'm going to come back with graphs and charts later, make me look like, visit Santa Barbara up here, and it's going to tell you how much money you guys helped bring to the city of Santa Barbara, and you shall be very proud of doing it. So thank you very, very much. As I say, my door is always open. If you have questions, if you ever just want to say, Steve, what makes you do all this? I can probably answer that offstage, because I would really not like to go into that right now. Oscar, thank you very much. Thank you all. I appreciate it. We'll see you on Saturday, and you guys are all rock stars.
And as only Smokey USA, only you can prevent silly costumes.
I did what I can, the good Lord and my mother willing, lending my advice, and it seemed to have worked. Thank you.
Very good. Are there any speakers online?
No raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. With that, we'll close public comment, and we will go to item 17. Would you read that into the record, please?
Item 17, adoption of the two-year fiscal, excuse me, adoption of the two-year financial plan for fiscal years 2026 and 2027, and the operating capital budget for fiscal year 2026, resolution, and I'm now going to read a number of resolutions. Recommendation, the council A, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the two-year financial plan for fiscal years 2026 and 2027. B, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026 by appropriating monies for the use and support of said city from the funds into the purposes herein specified. Item C, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara establishing the city's appropriation limitation for fiscal year 2026. Item D, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the city's Santa Barbara schedule of penalties, fees, and service charges, services charges. Item E, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the city of Santa Barbara water harbor front slip mooring and user fees. Item F, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the city of Santa Barbara abandoned shopping cart recovery fee. Item G, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing classified and unclassified positions in the city's service effective June 28, 2025, and providing a schedule of classifications and salaries for the same in accordance with the operating budget for fiscal year 2026. H, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the continuation of capital and special project appropriations to fiscal year 2026. And finally, I adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the public works director to execute water purchase agreements in a form approved by the city attorney and in accordance with the appropriation in the approved budget as may be amended from time to time.
All right, very good. And Mr. DeMartini.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the public. My name is Natalia Glusak. I am the budget manager for the city of Santa Barbara, and with me today is, of course, our finance director, Keith DeMartini. Today, we have a very brief presentation for you covering the adoption of the, of our budget for fiscal years 2026 and 27 and the operating capital budget. So our agenda today is first, we're going to have a brief recap of our hearing schedule, then we'll go over a summary of changes and adjusted, and an adjusted general fund view, and also our recommendation to council, and then open it for questions. So here is our budget hearing schedule, which we've seen in each of our budget hearings. You can see that we've had a road to get here, including our, you know, all the way from budget introduction and some pre-work for that, and today, hopefully, budget adoption. We have a brief listing of the summary of changes to the budget. This year, we, of course, had approved the staff recommended adjustments, which were mostly technical changes. Then there was a motion by council to add $100,000 from the general fund to start a wildfire suppression district for the newly designated Mesa High Fire Hazard Zones. And there was also a movement to add $2 million from the general fund for the local housing trust fund in both fiscal years 2026 and 2027. This is our updated general fund overview with the approved adjustments. We are looking at a recommended use of reserves in 2026 of $1.6 million with the, with the budget to meet the 25% policy reserve target. That's an additional $4.4 million to get us, get us there, and so that will be a $6 million deficit in 2026. In fiscal year 2027, we're looking at a total deficit of 8.4 million. So there's going to take several actions to actually formally adopt the budget today. The first is, the first resolution is to adopt the two-year financial plan. That is our plan for the next two years. The second is actually formally adopting the budget itself for fiscal year 2026. In fiscal year 2027, we will be back with a mid-year update and to update, and to adopt the 2027 budget at that time. We also have an appropriation limit, also known as the GAN limit, and that is a expenditure limit that we have that is state imposed for fiscal year 2026. We also have our full schedule of penalties, fees, and service charges. That is voted on in three separate resolutions, because we do have two council members that are recusing themselves on a couple of items, and so you will see those bits redacted that are being recused, and then the rest of it redacted, and then shown through. So the full schedule is on our website, just in one piece, or you can look at those pieces together and see all the lines. We also have our positions and schedules and classifications and salaries. That is telling us what we can pay our people. We also have a continuation of capital and special projects appropriations, which allows staff to continue those multi-year projects and roll those already approved ones forward. And then finally, we have a resolution to allow our public works director to execute water purchase agreements. So next steps are the staff will continue to work, of course, in, on the budget. We always continue to improve it. As more information comes out, we come back to council if we have more opportunities and make sure that that stays transparent to our public. We also have our monthly financial update reports on the consent agenda and quarterly monitoring of the budget that we do bring to finance committee. We also always want to ensure that we, we, we don't, didn't have any expenditure targets this year, reduction targets this year, but we always want to make sure that we're doing our best to make sure that those expenditures stay in line. We also are, this year, for the first time, developing that strategic plan for the city, which you guys have been working on, and we look forward to seeing that evolve. And then we are going to begin pretty soon planning for the fiscal year 2027 mid-cycle budget update. And with that, I will open the floor for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Announcement first, please. For anyone, there's, I don't have any speaker slips present, for people present. If you're online and wish to speak, you'll have until 2:30 to raise your hand to speak at this item. So once again, public speaker requests will end at 2:30 for this item. And we will move back to council for questions, and it'd be Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. I only have a couple of questions. If you could pull up slide five. So for the fiscal year 26, it shows a 1.6 million deficit. Is that inclusive of any changes in contracts for public safety, both fire and police, that are underway, or if there's any changes, or does that include any changes that could come with that? Are they factored in?
Councilmember Friedman, so the $1.6 million deficit in fiscal year 2026, it assumes the, the assumptions that have been built into the recommended budget at the time the city administrator released it a couple of months ago, which is a 5% salary increase assumption in fiscal year 26, and then in fiscal year 27, it's a 4%. And so we are in active negotiations right now with multiple bargaining units. If the agreements that come to council for approval exceed those assumptions built in the budget, it will have sort of negative implications on the proposed budget.
So if they're above 5% and 4%, then that 1.6 would grow?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think that was, and then the reserves, you weren't counting that, so we're, based on this budget, we would be 4.4 million in the hole on reserves.
Councilmember Friedman, so for, the 4.4 million dollar number is the amount of money that we should be putting into the general fund reserve in that fiscal year to maintain the 25% reserve policy target. And so because we're projecting a deficit in fiscal year 26 of 1.6 million dollars, the number right above the 4.4, because we're projecting a deficit, that means that the, really the revised deficit, if you take into account how much we're going to be under-reserved by 4.4 million, is actually $6 million.
And then my, my last question, I guess this might be from Ms. McAdoo, because it got brought up earlier, or last week, was on the, the police positions. So there was a question on those, those three that are being held vacant and we're calculating the savings, but should the other concurrent vacancies, the other approximately 10 or so positions get filled this year? And then there was an opportunity to fill those three positions, we would move to fill those positions?
Absolutely. I have made a commitment to the chief as part of this budget process that we would come back to council and request additional appropriation to fill those three.
And if that were to happen, then, then, then that also is not accounted for in the 1.6 deficit? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I had a question. I apologize, I didn't ask this earlier, and about, it's, it's just one line in the fees, it's downtown parking fees, description number one, it's on page 81 of the attachment to the fee schedule attachment. And you'll recognize it. It just says, first 75 minutes, once per calendar day, per vehicle, is subsidized. And I'm just recalling, I think we had individual briefings where it came to finance, and I thought that there was a sort of movement not to have that be per vehicle, once per day, so I just want to make sure I understand, like...
I think this, if I recall this particular issue, it was within the parking garages, and it was within, like, and I think we were trying to get within a half-day period, because this was the issue where people who work downtown have their assistants go out and move their car every 75 minutes and go out of the garage and then come back around and repark. And so, but I believe it was every three hours was how we were going to get, because we can adjust the timing on the sensors, not once in a calendar day, so let...
Could we just strike once per calendar day, per vehicle? I guess, I mean, I know it sounds like a small thing, but I think when we had our briefings, and we didn't discuss it here at council, so I, I feel like I should say my comments here so that it's open. I, I sort of objected to, you know, making that an issue for everybody who might be shopping downtown because of a few people who may be taking advantage of the system in that way. And I have questions about, you know, are you going to use license plate readers to say you can't come back in this lot in the afternoon if you were there in the morning?
I think we can strike it, and then if we, let's strike per calendar day, and then if we need to revise it, we can always come back and make a change based on what the intention was.
So if we could strike once per calendar day, per vehicle?
Councilmember Sneddon, just to confirm, you're on page 81 of the master fee schedule, and which item?
It's page 81 of the master fee schedule, and it's item number one.
Number one at the top of the page, great.
Reads, first 75 minutes, once per calendar day, per vehicle, and we're going to strike once per calendar day, per vehicle. And then we can talk all about that later.
If we need to.
Thank you so much.
So that can be part of the motion for that resolution. That would be ideal.
Actually, I just got a message from Ms. Clark. It says, let me just read it, and then maybe we, we know what to amend it as. It's once per day, per lot.
Yeah, I'd like to not have that be the case.
Okay, we can, we can come back and, and make further, so let's strike it, and then we, if we need to further discuss it, we can.
Yeah, because we didn't really, it wasn't, we heard it at finance and then individual briefings, but it wasn't true, okay. And then I just wanted, my other question is just to confirm, just along the lines of councilmember Friedman, we still have class and comp implementation to look at, in-lu fee structures to look at, standards of coverage to look at, in-lu fees, TOT audit, and any number of things that might cause adjustments in this budget as we're moving on? Okay, I just want to confirm that, that there's any number of things. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just a comment on that. Ms. Sneddon, it's like, so for, as long before we've had even some of the lots we have today, the 90-minute shuffle and the 75-minute shuffle's been, is the problem I've been trying to solve, and we're trying to do it, obviously, with analog, and now we're going to have digital technology. It can really be flexible to do these things. I think whatever we do, I want the parking committee and the parking staff to have the flexibility to make those adjustments as we see fit. So that once-per-day thing is really chronic about, where somebody parked, their, their business is a lot ten, and they do that, they send somebody out, and it's an abuse of the system. We want to make sure that, that's the whole purpose behind that.
And I think we'll need to come back sooner, that, rather than later, because I do think that was a key piece of the downtown parking budget sort of fixes for this coming year. But I think we can come back and do a full presentation for council and make that adjustment.
All right, very good. And, Mr. Johnson, are you here to speak on this item?
No.
Okay, I was going to say, because you've got 30 seconds left, just turn your slip in. With that, there are any other questions or comments from council at this point in time? Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Historically, council has allowed those in a minority gobbled up by the, by the bigger motions to break out those motions to continue their dissent. I'm prepared today with help from staff to change recommendation A and B to remove out the... the, for A, because it's a two-year budget plan adoption, to remove out the fiscal year '26, $2 million housing trust fund, and remove out the 2027, and make that into a three-motion process where we're approving the overall resolution for the two-year plan without either of them, but then also a set of follow-up motions to add those back in so that people can vote, just as they voted last week. And then with resolution B, which is only for adoption of just the one-year fiscal year 2026, same thing, to have a parent motion on the resolution to adopt 2026 without the $2 million, and then to have a follow-up motion by those who wish to move it back in and let us vote separately. Staff has my language, I don't know, did you make, were there slides made or anything for that?
Councilmember Jordan, we did not prepare slides, but the way that you verbalize a motion, I think is accurate, to take separate actions today if you would choose to do so.
So, Ms. Connect, should we have that after public comment on the item, in terms of when we go to the deliberation on the motion?
I just heard you ask for comments, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Typically, you would do public comment and then move to comments and motion.
I can wait. I thought you just said comments now.
Well, we are comments, but, all right, so, because we're kind of getting in the weeds on the motion, so that's, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Ms. Connect, do we have anybody that raised their hand online?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, no hands raised.
Okay, very good. Now with that, we will go ahead and close public comment on this item, and we'll move forward for motion and/or discussion deliberation. Mr. Jordan, you're still up.
So there's some reading to do here. Does staff need me to read these out?
Yes, I think you should read them out, along with your motion.
Bear with me.
We usually do.
So one is a replacement for resolution A, and then the other two motions, I'll be happy to put those up on the table that I'm not supporting, just so they're up on the table, in all fairness. So resolution A would be replaced by, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, adopting the two-year financial plan for fiscal years 2026 and 2027, subject to removing the two-year financial plan, the use of the general fund reserves to fund the local housing trust fund with $2 million for fiscal year 2026, and removing from the two-year financial plan, the use of general fund reserves to fund the local housing trust fund with $2 million for fiscal year 2027. If anybody's concerned about hearing the follow-up motions to that, I'd be happy to go through those, whatever.
What do you suggest, Ms. Connect?
I would suggest that we take action on the first motion, and then, I mean, Councilmember Jordan, you're free to read what that second motion would be, but we should just vote on them one by one.
I think it would be helpful to read it so the rest of the council knows what else is coming.
Like I'm not gaming them?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so then the following two motions would split up the reallocation, so to speak, by the majority to put the $2 million back into each fiscal year, okay? So I'll go through two of them, both of them. But this is all...
These are all adjustments to recommendation A, okay.
Resolution A. So the second motion would be to direct staff to return to council on July 1, 2025, with a resolution amending the adopted two-year financial plan to authorize the use of general fund reserves to fund the local housing trust fund with $2 million in fiscal year 2026. That accomplishes the first year, because I think there's some people who want the first year and not the second year. And then a subsequent motion to direct staff to return to council also on July 1, 2025, with a resolution amending the adopted two-year financial plan to authorize the use of general fund reserves to fund the local housing trust fund with $2 million in fiscal year 2027. If anybody has any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you. So I'm just looking at the staff report recommendations, and couldn't, couldn't we just separate out, adopt by reading of title only, the resolution for fiscal year 2026, vote, and then a separate one, adopt by reading of title only, resolution, da-da-da-da, fiscal year '27, vote?
I think we are, we're, I'm trying to separate out the vote for the entire package of a fiscal year that is a yes or no vote that includes the $2 million.
Ms. Connect.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to Councilmember Sneddon that recommendation A is to adopt the two-year financial plan, so, and the action taken last meeting was to add the $2 million into each of those fiscal years. So council needs to adopt the two-year financial plan with recommendation A. So that's why we, you know, we wouldn't want to split that, that motion. So what Councilmember Jordan is recommending is that the funding be taken out completely, and then the direction to staff to bring back the resolution at the next meeting to add it back in, but separately, one for '26, one for '27.
And that way, it allows the rest of us, they may not want to do the thing about the reserves, to vote for the rest of the budget.
Because if we don't pull out the $2 million appropriation, then you'll have three colleagues who would vote against the entire budget just because of that one item.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, I'm trying, just trying to understand. It's a lot of words, I'm not very auditory, like, I'm just trying to follow along where this is in words. So it's, is it the titles of the resolutions that are changing? Or the... It is the titles, yes. Oh, thank you. Can we all have a copy of this?
I'll have a copy.
Yeah, I think before we, I mean, it's the whole budget, yeah.
Yeah, and it allows us to basically repeat, you know, person for person, what, if everybody has not changed their mind to do what we did last week, so.
Fully support.
Okay. All righty, so the motion is...
Should we tell we get...
Don't read it again, right. Do you understand the motion, Madam Clerk?
What happens if other people say no? I saw a lot of nodded heads when Kelly was walking out to get printed copies.
Okay. All right, so we'll wait for a moment for Ms. McAdoo to get back. We think she just went out to make copies, but who knows?
Mr. Mayor, you could move forward with recommendations on some of the other action items, you know, not, not including A and B, but you could move forward with C.
Okay, are we voting on each one of these separately?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Because I'm going to be pulling myself out of an item today, so. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. We just, I think, have a question about, since it's already agendized this way for today, why we can't just make all of the motions today? Like, why does something have to come back separate? So the two additional items directing staff to come back on July 1, that's necessary because that's not on today's agenda. But today's agenda is the budget as is, and it's these changes that would need to come back, not the budget as is. It's the change to amend the resolution that adopts the budget to add back in. So you could either not, not vote in favor of Councilmember Jordan's motion and just make a motion to adopt the language as is. And then, you know, or you could accept Councilmember Jordan's motion, vote on that, which would then, either it would remove, it would remove those, the total $4 million to the local housing trust fund for, you know, fiscal years '26 and '27, unless you then direct staff to come back with a subsequent resolution to add that funding back in. So the, I want to honor this clearly, to be able to just vote on these separately. But I don't think I understand, is the choice that either the prevailing side votes on a budget that they didn't approve and says, okay, but bring our changes back? Or it's that, I don't understand?
I think it's because there's, if you remove it from the resolution and you remove it from that first motion, there's not a resolution that the council has adopted appropriating the $2 million. And we have to adopt the budget before July 1, so it is easier to adopt the resolution without the $2 million in each year, come back on July 1, amending the budget and the fiscal plan to add back in the $2 million in each year.
So I have to vote yes on a two-year plan that does not include that second year?
Initially, and then you would vote on the second and third motions, which would add it back in, but we would come with a resolution on July 1, amending...
I think I'll probably just end up voting no, honestly, and then wait till it comes back. I don't, I'm not comfortable, for the same reasons. I'm not comfortable voting yes on a budget that doesn't happen any more than you're comfortable on voting yes on a budget that does have it. So I'm willing to vote no and take that instead.
You're a prerogative, very good. With that, are we ready to move the, or do you want to go down the list instead? Ms. Connect?
No, because all I, you know, all I do is to see changes and no's to my original problem with staff of having two or three people vote no to the budget. Now I just see the opposite two or three voting no on the budget for a different reason. So, you know, this is a little unique, other than just a usual item because of the timeline of from now until the first and no meeting, and having to have a piece of legislation to adopt to keep it in there, which can't happen on the fly today, but the motion can happen on the fly today. So literally, you know, I saw three nodding heads down there. Three nodding heads are going to say, oh, no, we're going to, we're going to vote no on resolution A and wait for it to come back. I'll just pull the, pull the motions that I'm offering, and I'll vote no on the entire budget and share my reasons why. So I'd be happy to take the hit personally.
Well, being going the way, which was, and I'd be right with you on that, but it is unfortunate, wait a minute.
We have to adopt the city's budget before July 1.
Yeah, we have to adopt the budget, number one.
And because we don't have a regularly scheduled meeting on June next week, it, the budget, even if we added a special meeting, the budget could not be adopted on that date.
Plus for, and to Mike's, to Mike's motion, the idea is that we were, we had the original city administrator's budget, though the late addition of reserve funds was a rather extraordinary move, and we're saying you'll still be able to do it, but let's just get the budget passed first, and then you can still have what you'd like to do. So that's, that's my feeling about it. Ms. Sneddon, your light is still on, do you still have some? Okay. Mr. Friedman, are you?
So the, I'll just say that I agree where Councilmember Jordan is. If what he's proposing isn't acceptable, we're in the minority on it, so then just put the whole budget forward and it'll be a 4-3 budget. I can't support the budget for the second year, given what we just heard today and knowing the changes that we're going to have to do, most likely with police and fire and negotiations. Because right now, that 1.6 million deficit's only a 5, 5 and a 4%, so that's going to grow. I have concerns about '26, but when in finance last, last week, tried to bridge that compromise, I thought there was some unanticipated revenue that could come in, but I'm more uncertain about that now. And I would have liked to have been able to vote for the whole budget except for that one piece of it. And the plan that Councilmember Jordan proposed would have allowed us to do that and come back. But since we're in the minority, I would say defer to the majority. If you don't want to support what he's doing, then it'll be an up or down on the budget, and I'm fine voting no on the entire budget if we can't make that compromise.
Ms. Sneddon. Oh, actually, Ms. Harmon was first, sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I mean, I do acknowledge that there are three people on the council who voted differently, and I respect that and understand your reasons for doing so. I think we all articulated that last week or whenever we had that conversation. I would just say, I encourage everyone moving forward, to the extent that it's really important to you to vote separately on an element of a cohesive package, you should really identify that for staff who are writing the resolutions before the meeting gets posted. I think had this been made clear, that this needed to be a separate item, it could have been written as such and then posted that way, such that we didn't have to delay the voting on it. So I don't mean this as, as like a finger pointing, but I would say this, it didn't have to be this way either. So I would encourage us all to maybe try to do a little early legwork so we don't find ourselves in this position moving forward. And from my perspective, I would just say, I wish that we didn't have to have a split vote on this budget, but I also think that we all are very happy and grateful with how it turned out, even if the sheer numbers look a little different. You've all gone on record, and I appreciate that we are cohesive and unified in our support for the budget, generally speaking. And whatever the vote comes out today, that will be my takeaway, that we are united in almost every way that matters in regards to this budget, and that we have worked really hard collectively together to put forward something positive.
Ms. Sneddon.
Yeah, thank you. I would love the opportunity to be able to vote separately on these items, but the way it is agendized is such that it's, it's one or the other, unfortunately. And I think if there was a will to have a special meeting sometime between now and July 1, that we could have them separated out, if that was important.
We can't make appropriations on special meetings, unfortunately.
Okay. Yeah, this is really unfortunate, because a lot of the other things are already separated out for different recusals of different people, but I think the choice is either, somebody has to vote no on the entirety of the budget today, and that's really unfortunate, truly, truly. I wish it could be separated out to vote on separately.
Mr. Jordan?
I'll withdraw those motions.
Okay, I think that's actually rather sad that we're doing that, only because we have, we have a budget that was put together by staff and the city administrator and presented to us. The use of reserves to do what we did for a special thing is extraordinary, and it's also not particularly forward-looking when you look at our reserve budgets and our budgets going forward. So I think it was appropriate to go along with Mr. Jordan's budget, get our city administrator's provided budget, voted in whole as a council unanimously, possible, and then move forward, and you can still get what you want, whether we agree with it or not, on a 4-3 for the next following two years. But this was not part of the proposed budget coming forward. Now, I'll speak to Ms. Harmon's thing about timing, is that this should have been brought up much, much earlier in the whole, in the whole, like a number and doing this, so the city administrator could have brought that out. So, no, I know. And I'm just saying, as we have, we're going to put forward, if we go without the motion, we're going to put forward a 4-3 budget, which I don't know if I've ever seen before. And it's unfortunate, because we really have, staff and Ms. McAdoo worked long and hard to present us with a budget. So that's what I would like to do, you can still get, at the end of the day, what you want out of the deal. But we just want to put our budget forward in a unanimous and cohesive way. Ms. Harmon?
I think I know the answer to this, but I just have to ask of staff one more time to be totally sure. Is there any, do you see any path forward? And let me articulate my concern about waiting to July 1 on these other appropriations. What I'm doing today, if we go with Councilmember Jordan's motion, is voting yes on the budget. I don't know what's going to happen on July 1, and that's where I have heartburn. I think I have four votes, but I don't know, and things could change in two weeks. Is there any, is there any way to thread...
Is there any, is there any way to thread the needle? Because I want to be able to do this, but I want to have some assurance on my end also. Because if I vote yes today, and then in two weeks someone changes their mind, I've voted yes on something that I don't actually agree with. So how do I?
So, so.
Ms. McAdoo.
Well, a couple, a couple options. We'll just sort of brainstorm on the fly here.
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
So I, I think, you know, I mean, it's hard, because, you know, obviously, like, you know, this will now have been the second meeting where four members will vote for the $2 million appropriation. I think, you know, it's pretty clear, but obviously we have to come back with a formal resolution. What Director DiMartini was saying, you could vote for the whole budget and then have a separate motion to, well, that wouldn't work. Deappropriate the $2 million?
On July 1st.
On, on July 1st. So it's basically the reverse.
Oh.
So you'd vote four, but would they, so they'd vote 4-3 today?
Council, Mayor, Mayor Rouse, members of the city council, you could take an action to vote to approve the resolutions that are before you today, which include the $2 million transfers to the local housing trust fund in both fiscal years. And then, as part of that motion, if Councilmember Jordan or another want to make the motion to direct staff to bring another item to city council on July 1st, regular city council meeting, to direct staff to deappropriate the transfers from the general fund into the local housing trust fund in both fiscal years.
That puts us in a position of having to give something and take it back.
But I don't, but I don't think that actually gets to the, the.
Well, not really. No, you still get to do what you're going to do.
Yeah, it's still, it's, that doesn't work, because it would still be a 4-3 vote, because.
That's right, because then the.
Because what you, what you want to do, so basically, what I think we could do, though, is on July 1st.
Vote to deappropriate.
Take it, amend it, and say, have two additional resolutions. So basically, adopt today, it would be a 4-3 vote, on July 1st, have the same action, but we're amending it, and then we have the, the main budget resolution amended to, to remove the, the $4 million. We would have the two additional resolutions. So you would still get it, but then everyone who wanted to vote for the budget would vote for the amended budget on July 1st, because we would be able to pull out all the resolutions. And it would amend, the main budget would no longer have those in, but you would still have the resolutions on July 1st continuing the appropriation. So, so council would be voting 4-3 today to say, on the, on the budget as is, and then on July 1st, we'd have a budget without the $4 million, a resolution with the, the $2 million, a resolution with the $2 million, so you could have the main budget amended resolution for 7-0 vote, and then you could do the, you know, 6-1 and, or 5-2.
Still puts us back in Ms. Harmon's conundrum about people changing their mind between now and then, but.
Can I ask one quick follow-up?
Okay, go ahead.
On the deappropriation motion, my thought was that by allowing for that motion, it gives those who don't support the $2 million the opportunity to go on record that they are not in support of that element, while still being able to vote 7-0 for the full budget today. And so if that will work, if I'm understanding.
That's what we wanted to do in the first place.
No.
But you'd still have to vote 4-3 on the budget today.
Or you'd have to accept that the next motion would be the deappropriation, which you would lose on, but you've gone on record.
Or you could just say, why do all that and just vote 4-3 on the budget today? Right?
Yeah, maybe, a couple, go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
We're, we're making this way too complicated. First, there are issues that came up today. Last week, I thought the budget was an $800,000 surplus. It's changed in just the week, on top of whatever is coming with our public safety. So that's new information that change, that changes things significantly. And the reality is, it would have been nice to be able to vote on it, but at the end of the day, this budget, for fiscal year 26, I think it will be okay, but it's going to, we didn't, if we really wanted to invest in housing like we wanted to, we should have given staff earlier direction to really look at the long-term consequences that were shown multiple times by not only Mr. DiMartini, but the NHA, going out to fiscal year 28, 29, 30. We didn't really talk about that, it was raised. And so I think this budget sets us on a bad course, that we could have course corrected in a year from now, but a week ago, Councilmember Jordan had said, hey, the fiscal year 27, let's wait six months and see. That, that didn't pass with the majority. So I think at this point, there's three of us that are in the minority. There's, on fiscal year 27, there's three of us. On fiscal year 26, there's, there's only one, the mayor, on that. But the reality is, the majority, you, you pass that budget, so that's fine, I'm in the minority, I'm fine voting against it, it's not ideal to me, but I do have larger concerns than just this $2 million. So the easiest thing to do is to vote on it, it's 4-3, that's too bad, but that's the reality, and we move on. I don't think it serves anybody to bring back resolutions just so I can be on the record as voting against something or for something, just as I don't think you guys should be able, or my three colleagues, four colleagues, should be on the record of voting for a budget that doesn't include it. So I think Councilmember Jordan, I don't want to speak for you, but you withdrew your motion, he's said he's okay with voting against the whole thing, I'm okay voting against the whole thing. Let's just get it done and move on to next year.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you. I just really want to say that it's, I think all of us would rather we could vote on these separately and honor that. This isn't about not honoring that, very truly. And if there was a way to do that, I would still appreciate that. And if, if it, if it isn't, if we truly can't do that, then I don't mind either way. I could vote no if it had it or not. I do want to mention, though, and just, just, this is important to me, I mentioned on day one of budget introduction, that I thought it should be $5 million. And I brought it up at almost every meeting that we had, that I'd still like to see that $5 million, and there was comment on that. Then it went to finance, where they discussed $5 million. This has been through the entire budget process in the room. It's not a, you know, late, out-of-the-hat ad or request. So even before the budget process, when we discussed Measure I at a different time. So that $5 million has been very much in conversation from the beginning. So I don't think it's so extraordinary that it came in after going to finance. But I do think it's very unfortunate that we can't all vote together for a yes on at least one of the years that we all agree on. It's unfortunate.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just to be, just for my own recollection, if we feel like our economic status changes and need to make a change to the budget to better allocate funding for the situation, is a two-person memo applicable for that?
Sure. I mean, the council can do a two-person, I mean, we will also bring forward, you know, we have the quarterly financial updates, so the council will be, you know, be aware of potential budget issues, and if there are changes needed, we would recommend it then. But you could also, as part of those quarterly financial updates, make motions as part of that, if you wanted to make changes, or you could do a two-person memo at any point to make a change.
I just wanted to remind myself and my colleagues that that's always an option if things change.
Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. As a follow-up, that would be a motion for, or an item for finance committee to consider before it came to full council, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jordan.
This is like torture. I'll just, I'll just move Resolution A in the staff report. Let's get on and move on.
Second.
Okay, motion for Resolution A, by Jordan, second by Harmon.
I have some comments.
Okay. Comments to the motion?
To the motion, and that is, I share Councilmember Friedman's remarks also, so, just so, somebody says, whoa, what, it's been a week, you've changed. Well, lots happened in a week. That number went from several hundred thousand dollars surplus to almost a couple million dollars deficit, actual money. And I realize we're going to have a discussion on reserve fund levels, so that second line is crazy line right now. But in addition to that, you know, for many of the same reasons that the four of you offered last week, the, just the mayhem at the federal level and how that gets passed down to state and local governments' mayhem also, I don't, personally, after thinking further about it for a week, I don't think that even that $1.6 million cash deficit without manipulation in accounting world on reserves is even an accurate figure. I mean, I think we'd be happy a year from now to only have lived through the year and lost $1.6 million, having to flood that back into the general fund from the reserves, because I think it's going to get worse. I think what's, what's, what's happening is just still on a, a steamroll of, of getting worse. I see tourism tightening up, because people are getting scared and don't know what's going on from the national to the local level. And I think we had the opportunity to literally live within our bucket of money, and we declined to do that. And then, you know, you can't even whisper about what's going on with collective bargaining agreements, but those consequences are all, you know, six-zero numbers with a number in front of the six zeros on every decision we make there, too. And there's two coming up immediately, and they're going to add to the, to the, the budget mayhem. So I'm just, that's the reason I attempted to split this up, make it a little more palatable, but I'm also fine just voting no for both of the, the major adoptions here because of those reasons. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Freeman.
I'll just say, I echo everything Councilmember Jordan, and to the, the issue of the housing, I would have liked to have been able to be, be able to support 26, but Councilmember Sneddon, you are correct that the $5 million didn't just come in at the end. I, I went back and I read the materials and things that I wasn't available to be at. So I don't, that's, if my comments were meant that way, I didn't want that to be that, that this came at the end. It is, but the, the flip side of it is that if we, we should have, as a council as a whole, should have said, if we want to make the multi-year $5 million investment, with the information that Mr. DiMartini and the NHA had, a set, independent general fund analysis, we should have tightened the belts a little bit to account for it, because in the end, it ends up going into the reserves. And that's, that's my point, is looking back hindsight, we could have done a little more homework on that front end to avoid the deficit, but that's, that was my only point. But I want to make, I want to make it clear that the $5 million didn't just come at the end. There are, there's people who've been advocating for that, even on council from the start. So it wasn't a surprise that it came, it's just, we as a council should have identified ways to offset it. And that's a lesson that we should really take to heart for next year, in particular, once we see where our financials go. So I'll, I'll be voting no on it and just wanted to, to explain that point.
All right, to the motion, I won't be supporting it because of things I've said before, I don't feel I'd be responsible in creating these deficits over the next two years, plus the creation of the local housing trust fund, partially along with the 115, was in order to have a way to end up our year in case we had surpluses, or a way to divert some monies in those ways. We did that, and the money that's been appropriated for this upcoming, for this year, 26, is going to wipe out the entire fund if it's used for what they need, and they're going to be back, or the same folks will be back, or exactly the same time next year, asking again. We have to decide, what is our capacity within the general fund to build affordable housing? It isn't part of our normal tasks to do that. We have a housing authority, they have different funding mechanisms, and we try to help out where we can, but this is extraordinary, and I think it's going to be inadequate, and I think we're voting for something that's going to be damaging to our budget, but is not going to have as much punch as people would like to think it does. So, and we're going to find ourselves hurting in other areas where we need support for housing homeless and other funds that we'd like to have. Ms. Santa Maria, you have a comment to the, to the motion?
Yes, briefly, yes. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Rouse. I'm proud to be voting on this budget as a whole, and I want to reiterate how much community support came out for these specific amendments. This was not one person's crusade here, this was a community-led effort for the allocations of what really amounts to people's tax dollars. I am trusting the community in that they know best, along with our finance department and our amazing finance director. I trust that the folks here who have put together what we're voting on today have done their best to advocate for the community's interest. I will be supporting it in, in full totality, because I think with the uncertainty that we're facing at the federal government, we do, yes, need to start trimming our expenses, but for us to say that the expenses we need to trim is on, on housing is, is very selective. And at the end of the day, I mean, I think there needs to be some trust in our, in our finance committee, that we are going to be looking at our finances quarterly and making adjustments as needed. But at the end of the day, this budget is really, as a city, us putting our literal money where our mouth is. It's important for us to signal to our constituents that we hear them, we hear that housing is their most pressing need right now, and that we're actually taking bold steps to address that. It may not be whatever, we, we may not all agree on how we are addressing that, but we are addressing it in one way. And I think that this, together, for the folks, whether you're voting for this or not, I think, I think our constituents have been quite engaged, and not to mention our staff, all of the work that has been put in, like, this is not something that was rushed through or that came out of nowhere, but rather came from the community's call up, brought to city staff, and eventually embedded and voted on. We've had this discussion, so I, I want to just remind our colleagues that a lot went into this conversation, it's not just something that blindsided us. And I will respectfully disagree with you, Mayor Rouse, I think this is going to be a wonderful investment in our community. We may not all agree on that, but I look forward to voting and seeing where things go.
All right, very, if there are no more comments, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. Do you have it, Madam Clerk?
This is a motion by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Harmon. For recommendation A. Please go ahead and vote.
Motion passes 4-3 with Rouse, Freeman, and Jordan dissenting. All right. Do we dare take other things in a group, or do we want to rule on each of these separately?
Mr. Mayor, we can't take them in as a group, because some of the resolutions, a couple of you need to recuse yourselves.
Okay, well, I'm going to recuse on E, I know that much, so, okay. But, all right, so let's have another motion then, item B. Moved by Harmon.
Second.
Second by Santa Maria. Any discussion on the matter?
And this is a motion by Councilmember Hardman, seconded by Councilmember Santa Maria, for recommendation B, as envoi.
Motion passes 4-3 with Rouse, Freeman, and Jordan dissenting. All right. Can we get them, item C. Ms. Sneddon.
May I ask a question about which one of these items is the one that explicitly states that we are having a plan to replenish the reserves and come back with that plan in the one year that was part of the budget? And I really want to emphasize that, that this isn't just a taking from the reserves, but absolutely has the plan within one year for the replenishment of those funds. It's really a borrowing of the reserves. Which, which one of these specifically has that wording that addresses that?
Councilmember Sneddon. So actually, none of these resolutions specifically call that out. The action was taken and voted on at last week's regular city council meeting, so it's in the record, and it was part of that action. So, over the next year, as directed by council, we will work collectively with you to replenish those reserves.
Okay, thank you, because I was, I was looking for it specifically to make sure.
And it was, yeah, and it would technically be part of A, which is the overall budget package, because the, there were the, the staff recommended changes from last week that were incorporated into that.
Thank you. Not to go back, but I just wanted to make sure that didn't get lost.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to item C. Anybody? Oh, moved by, moved by Sneddon, seconded by Harmon. Any discussion? May we have the vote, please, Madam Clerk? May we have the vote, please, Madam Clerk?
This is a motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Harmon, to approve recommendation C. Please go ahead and vote.
No, it was me. Passes 5-2 with Freeman and Jordan dissenting. Very good. Okay, we'll move on to item D.
Mayor Rouse, if I could move item D with the change of the wording on the parking to strike the verbiage about one vehicle per day.
I believe staff has made that edit and appropriation going forward, right?
Noted.
Okay, I think with that, I'll move that recommendation.
Moved by Sneddon.
Second.
Santa Maria, second.
Okay, and this is a motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Santa Maria, to approve recommendation D, striking the language similar to one vehicle per day, which was discussed earlier in the meeting. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Item E, I need to recuse, because I am a slip holder in the waterfront. Madam Attorney, do I need to leave the room for this vote?
Yes, unfortunately, you do.
Mr. Freeman, it's all yours.
Give us a second.
Sorry, was there a motion?
I was waiting for him to actually leave the room.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Is there a motion for item E? Moved by Councilmember Harden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gutierrez. The vote, please.
This is a motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Councilmember Gutierrez, for recommendation E. Please go ahead and vote. Actually, wait, I need to, please hold on, Mr. Mayor.
Not yet, not yet, go.
I, I just need to note that he, that the mayor will not be participating in this vote. Give me one second. This is not the vote that's showing, this is attendance. Again, this is not the vote, this is just attendance, and we'll do the vote in one moment. I'm sorry, let's try it one more time.
It's roll call. We will let you know.
Okay, we now have motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Councilmember Gutierrez for item E. Please go ahead and vote. And that is unanimous.
Welcome back, Mr. Mayor. In your, in your absence, we went back and relitigated item A and came to unanimous decision. So I, since I have the floor, I need to recuse myself from item F, the shopping cart ordinance, due to a financial conflict of interest with my other job at a grocery store.
And when Councilmember Freeman returns, we would just recommend the council could take G through I as one action, so.
Okay, we'll see if we can beat Freeman's record in coming to a vote here.
Again, hold, hold one moment, and I am going to retake attendance to show that he is not present, so this is not the vote.
In the meantime, can I make the motion?
Without Councilmember Freeman?
Correct.
You may.
I make the motion.
Oh, oh. I think the clerk needs to wait and take.
But I think they can, he can make the motion while we're waiting for the attendance to happen.
Okay, moved by Gutierrez, second by Harmon. Boy, that was a heavy lift.
Okay, this is a motion by Councilmember Gutierrez, seconded by Councilmember Harmon, for recommendation F. Please go ahead and vote.
Passes 6-0, Freeman absent. Okay, very good.
All right, and, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to take attendance one more time, showing everybody is here.
Are you here, Eric? Yes, you are. Per the city administrator, we may, if we'd like, take G, H, and I together?
Second.
Moved by Harmon, second by Gutierrez. May we have the vote?
This is a motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Councilmember Gutierrez, for recommendations G through I. Please go ahead and vote.
Passed unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, did that. Let's move on to item 18. Madam Clerk, would you read that into the record, please?
Certainly. Item 18, ordinance amending high fire hazard area zones. Ordinance introduction, recommendation of the council, A, introduced and subsequently adopted by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, approving updated fire hazard severity zones as recommended by the California State Fire Marshal.
Okay, and for any speakers who wish to speak on this item, we'll go until 3:25, either in person or online, to raise your hand. With that, chief, it's all yours.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chris Mills, your fire chief. I'm here with Fire Marshal Ryan DeGiulio. He's tuning up some technology right now. We're going to use a program to look at some different maps that the city and the fire department has created to assist in the delivery of this and to make it a little bit more clear for everyone. But basically, what we're doing here is every few years, CAL FIRE, the state California Fire Agency, looks at all areas of the state and the hazards and the fire hazards, vegetation fire hazards associated with that. The last time that CAL FIRE looked at local responsibility areas was 2011, so it's been 14 years since CAL FIRE looked at our fire hazard mapping. So CAL FIRE just redid the local responsibility area maps throughout the state of California. Before we talk about that, I want to give a little bit of context to what local responsibility area mapping is. Essentially, there are three types of land in California that government agencies look at. The first is federal responsibility area land. That would be national parks, national forests. The next is state responsibility area. That would be state land, and sometimes that information, that is given to county fire departments in some areas. And then the third is local responsibility area. We have a really unique situation here in that we can pretty much throw a rock from the city of Santa Barbara across the state lines and into the federal area. So it's really important and incumbent upon us to work really well with our partners, because we are extremely reliant on each other when it comes to vegetation fires. So back to the local responsibility area. CAL FIRE spent a great deal of time looking at the different local responsibility area maps throughout California. And on March 10th of 2025, they released the CAL FIRE LRA maps to include the city of Santa Barbara. One of the things that was really helpful to CAL FIRE and to us is the fact that we had a community wildfire prevention plan, or protection plan, pardon, sorry, that was voted on and approved by council in 2021. The CWPP, as it's called, we spent a great deal of time locating hazard areas within the city of Santa Barbara, and it's very important, and we will continue to emphasize that these are hazard maps, not risk maps. So our CWPP identified the hazardous fuel areas in the city of Santa Barbara, and actually, CAL FIRE used those maps to deliver the LRA maps to us back. As Chief DeGiulio is going to explain, when CAL FIRE hands down the LRA maps, we cannot rescind them, but we can expand them. So in other words, we can't say, no, that's not a hazard, but we can use our local knowledge and our subject matter experts to further amend the maps based on local concerns. Those local concerns could be weather, fuel, topography, et cetera. So what we really did was we looked at our CWPP, we looked at the maps given by the state, and we took a very common sense approach to expanding as little as we possibly could. It's really important for people to understand that the CAL FIRE maps that came to us did not take into account streets, did not take into account parcels. So when you look at the maps, you'll see that some properties have both moderate and high fire hazard area, or none and moderate, so, or low and moderate. So we took a step back and looked at options for us as a city to make it easier for our folks and for the community to understand. So again, we balanced the existing CWPP and what the state had placed into low, moderate, and high fire hazard areas, and we produced a local map that takes into account several factors, which we'll discuss. So I'd like to turn it over to Battalion Chief Fire Marshal Ryan DeGiulio, who will spend a few minutes explaining the methodology of how and why we created the maps for the city.
Thanks, Chief Mills. Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, councilmembers, Ryan DeGiulio, Battalion Chief Fire Marshal with the Fire Department. As Chief Mills mentioned, we'll just get into a little bit of detail of how we got to the point where we are today with these amended maps from the state and the process it took to get to this point. So, as Chief Mills mentioned, we are fortunate enough in this community to know our risks, or, excuse me, our hazards when it comes to wildland fire in our urban interface area. So we've taken actions long ago to actually come up with a community plan to take on this risk. So back in 2004 was our first community wildfire protection plan. That was updated, as you know, in 2021. It's a very robust document. In fact, we get phone calls from all over the state asking us how we did that and how can we get something in our jurisdiction. You might call it foreshadowing, but I think it's a, it's a testament to the city and the city council's direction, that we have been ahead of this curve before the events down in LA, before events we saw in Northern California and Southern California. So we're tackling this problem head on. With that being said, and this is a map that many of you are familiar with, this is our current designated high fire hazard areas within the city. We have the extreme foothill, the foothill zone, the coastal and the coastal interior zone. Each one of these zones have different regulations when it comes to vegetation management for each individual parcel, and all of them are included when it comes to different kinds of construction standards for new construction that happens in the city. So like I mentioned, we had those maps, quote unquote, on the books through the CWPP. So what happened in 2022 was that CAL FIRE, the state's fire department, was required to update the high fire hazard maps statewide. This is a very big project for them to do. The first areas they met, they took on were the state responsibility areas that Chief Mills mentioned. That took a good three years to get completed, and then they narrowed it down to the LRA, the local responsibility areas, which includes our city here. So back in March, as Chief Mills mentioned, we got that map released from CAL FIRE that said, here's our suggestions for high fire hazard areas within your city. So then we, as the local experts, get to dive into those suggestions, take public comments, and within certain time parameters, need to get that amended map passed by ordinance and then sent to the state. So once again, we had 30 days from that release date for us and the fire department to review the maps that the state handed to us. Again, as Chief Mills mentioned, we could not make them less stringent, but as most things, when it comes to ordinances and things handed out from the state, we could make them more stringent if we met some certain criteria. Again, some more timelines of how long we had to post those, get public feedback, and then, of course, post that ordinance with CAL FIRE up in Sacramento within 30 days of the ordinance being passed. So a lot of times, the people say, well, what did the, what did CAL FIRE do? How was their methodology and their, and their tactics for updating these maps? Did they just throw spaghetti on a wall and call it good? Not exactly. So they have, as you can imagine, that with the fire, the wildland fire crisis that's going through California, they've gotten some pretty good scientists and some new technology out there. So they used a fire, some new fire modeling techniques that takes into consideration things like ember intrusion, ember cast that you've heard a lot of, how far certain types of vegetation when it comes to topographical and geographical conditions, how far a wildfire could spread if lined correctly. So that's some of the modeling they did, and I'll show you later that, how that modeling wasn't super defined, like Chief Mills was mentioning. But they did take in to consideration throughout the state some of the specific weather areas or topographical concerns per jurisdiction. As you also know, our little slice of paradise here has some very different weather than lots of other places, a lot of different geographic features than other places, a lot of different rich fire history than other spots. So that's why we get that chance to amend the maps with some of that local knowledge that we have. So what areas specifically in the city did the state hand to us that say, this is now a concern as a high fire hazard area, and you need to take a closer look at these neighborhoods and what their impact could be from living in said areas? So East San Roque, Upper Hope area, Hidden Valley, Yellings Park, and over by Douglas Family Preserve were the areas that were modified in the city that were handed to us from the state. So if you can bear with me here one second, I'll kind of give you an idea of what that looks like. So if you can look on the screen here, either the one at your desk or the big screen, this is our beautiful paradise of Santa Barbara. What I'll first show you, these are different layers on a GIS map, and I just wanted to give a quick thank you to Eric Just and the GIS, and the GIS folks for putting this together for us. Layer I'm first going to show you is what we have designated now. This is the hash marked areas are designated as our current high fire hazard areas. Again, foothill, extreme foothill, coastal and coastal interior. So in March, what the state handed us is this area I'm going to turn on, which are the highlighted areas. So this CAL FIRE gave us this, these areas throughout the city, per their modeling, next to some open grassland or vegetative areas and/or fire history, designated these areas throughout the city as new high fire hazard areas. These are the areas that we needed to take into consideration, that 30-day period to review and try to make them true hazard areas and to make them work logically. And when I say work logically, I'll zoom into the East San Roque neighborhood here, and this is a prime example, especially what Chief Mills was talking about. If you look down at the bottom of this designated model here, it slices through parcels, right? That, that, that doesn't work for a litany of reasons, and I'm not getting into the, I haven't even touched the community development planning side of the house that our folks do over there. there. So part of that amendment process was to actually come up with new boundaries and lines to adopt said area, but also make it, actually make sense from a real world standpoint. So I'm going to turn on the layer here. It'll be for citywide, but this will be the area that we actually included, excuse me. And as you can see, I'll take that off and I'll add it on again. What we did is we incorporated areas that were much more logical to add into a high fire hazard area, major arterial streets, areas we've used in the past. We have had evacuation orders all the way down to State Street in this area in the past. I'll take that layer off again. Combining that area by the county land and off Maridaro and Constance Avenue and combining that to make it one continuous high fire hazard area. Now we're actually doing the work and having the regulations to make a buffer there instead of having a patchwork kind of area. So I'll pan out again and show you the Mesa area and what that looks like as well. Chief Mills and I got to kick out of this. I won't tell you what house it is, but his mother's house is actually one of these parcels that's split in third. So I think he told his mother to live in the living room or the back part of the house?
Yeah, I think it serves to the bigger example that these maps, again, did not take into account parcels. And so, again, my 91-year-old mother's residential lot is half in moderate and half in high fire hazard area, and that just doesn't work for community fire protection. So you'll see that we, and that's moderate and high is what you're looking at, yellow and gold is moderate and high, and then red is very high. What we did was we just took Floravista Drive in that situation and just came out to a major street and brought a few more houses into the area because it's just really not common sense to have parcels split or even small portions of a street split.
This actually bodes well, too, with our new evacuation software that's being launched countywide. It makes these areas a lot easier to do evacuations if needed by designating certain high fire hazard areas. So I'm happy to come back to this map at the question portion of our presentation, but I have just a couple more things to go over with you. So what does that all mean? What if somebody's parcel that wasn't in one of these highlighted areas is now in a highlighted area? The real world effects are a handful. One is that if there is any new construction in these areas, they need to now meet the high fire hazard construction requirements, which is found in the building code in Chapter 7A. This is already in effect in high fire hazard areas throughout the city and throughout the state. Defenseful space requirements will take effect in all new and existing structures in these areas, and Zone Zero requirements will also take into effect when that comes into law. That is still being batted around a little bit in Sacramento as far as the legislation goes. New Zone Zero requirements will be in effect for new construction first, and then existing is still getting batted around, so.
So just to reiterate a little bit more about Zone Zero, as Chief DeGiulio said, it is still in the legislative process. But what Zone Zero is, is that, again, new construction first and then existing construction later, and again, I stated again, it's still in the legislative process, is that there should be no combustible material from zero to five feet from your structure. Now, when we say it's being worked on in Sacramento, that could only be hypothetically relevant to very high fire hazard areas or high and not moderate. We don't know what's going to come out at the other end, but Zone Zero is a new term that we will be dealing with in the city of Santa Barbara, and again, likely up in our foothill or extreme foothill, and that is because embers can cause structure fires, it's the concept of removing all combustible material from zero to five feet from the building.
And you can imagine, post the instance in LA County, the different studies and modeling and ideas that will be coming to you probably within the future, let alone in our industry, and Zone Zero leading the charge in some of that. Talk a little bit about what the maps are not, because we get a lot of that from the public, and I'm sure you do as well. These maps are defined as hazard maps. They're not risk maps. Hazard maps deal with environmental factors when dealing with wildfires. Risk deals with factors like property values and assets. The state and government do not get into that world. We get into the world of defining what areas are hazardous so that we, the city, can take the appropriate measures to make those areas more fortified. Big difference between hazard and risk. Again, this is not new information to us. This is, we were ahead of the game in a lot of these regulations and what the state is coming out with, at us with. Yes, we do need to amend some areas because of our open spaces and other factors, but we take a really good, hard look at that and see how they logically make sense to adding those to our high fire hazard areas. So today, our recommendations is that we adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance to update our high fire hazard severity zones as recommended by CAL FIRE and the California State Fire Marshal, and also authorize a city administrator to engage in the administrative procedure to implement the wildland fire suppression assessment district in the coastal and coastal interior hazard areas as earmarked in this year's budget. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Okay, questions from council? Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You guys know I should just write my next newsletter, right? That California Building Code 7A, can you give me like just a quick sentence on what that means? Is new construction adding on a bedroom to an existing house, or is new construction ground up new building?
Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Jordan, good question. There's different trigger points when it comes to remodels in different jurisdictions, but the easiest answer is every single newly constructed building, regardless of commercial or residential, in a designated high fire hazard area has to meet certain construction requirements: boxing eaves, non-combustible roofs, dual pane windows, proper landscape clearance, driveway access, water access. 7A really developed out of the really bad fire season in San Diego County in the mid-'90s, I believe.
I imagine if I just Google 7A, I'll get somebody's dummies for Mike, you know, bullet points for that, right? I don't have to read the whole legislation, right?
Correct. I'm even happy to give you our handout.
Yeah, well, and then on the Zero, Zone Zero thing, so he said zero to five feet from structure, but does Zone Zero also, it doesn't place any requirements on the actual structure? So it's just the, you know, the dirt around the structure? You don't have any new requirements being put on your wood siding house to not make it wood anymore, that type of thing? Or you don't have any 7A requirements on your new wood-sited house to not make it wood anymore?
Yeah, Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Jordan, there are certain trigger points when working on a single-family dwelling that require a permit and/or review from the city's building department. If it is tagged as a high fire hazard area, they make sure those materials meet some of that 7A criteria. So there's really two avenues. It's vegetation management, and it's the actual structure itself. So the Zone Zero only deals with the vegetation from the exterior portion of the house to five feet out. That would fall under that vegetation management category, not so much the structure.
7A does pick up some other situations where, like, you just couldn't have a wood house anymore or something, right?
Yes, everything from spacing underneath decks to, you name it, non-combustible siding to rated assemblies, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much for this.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Is this questions and comments or just questions?
This is questions.
Just questions. Because this is an action item, so yeah, just questions.
Okay, thank you. So a question, so the insurance companies use the CAL FIRE maps, not our CWPP hazard maps, is that correct?
Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Sneddon, from my understanding, the insurance companies do not use any kind of hazard maps whatsoever. They are strictly in the game of risk and that they cannot, this is a predictive tool. Insurance companies cannot use predictive tools. They can only use retroactive data to include their rates.
Thank you. I think that's a question that comes up a lot. I mean, I'll save for my comments, my appreciation for how much you've been out in the community explaining all of these things to the community, I'll save that for comments, but that is a question that comes up frequently. And then, will these properties be annexed into the wildland fire suppression district that already exists up there? Because now these will be properties in high fire that would also need to have clearing and chipping and all of those things as well.
I'll let our city attorney, Sarah, connect, dive in, but from my understanding, no, because that's a voter-approved tax assessment, and just because the map changes doesn't mean you're automatically in the assessment district.
Councilmember Sneddon, that would be absolutely correct. We would need to amend the plan, and then there would need to be a revote on the district to add additional parcels to the zone of benefit.
So we may want to reserve conversations about that, because there will be questions about that. And congratulations, my district, I think, had 10 blocks that were not in high fire or extreme high fire, and now it has five blocks that are not in that map. So it's, you know, it might as well just be the entire district that pays into the assessment for the safety of all. And then, since we're here and the question comes up often in relationship to the CWPP, which the longer it's around, the more and more I appreciate it, all that went into that with so much community involvement and engagement, but private-public partnerships, and maybe this isn't the time for that question about, you know, as pertains to clearing of hazards or anything like that in these areas.
Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Sneddon, yeah, as you are aware, because you've been to some of these town hall meetings, we're really pushing the community engagement and partnering with us. You've heard my line, I say every time, that the first word of the CWPP is "community", not by mistake, because it takes all of us to take this problem on head-on. So the real push from our stance is to, hey, we're trying to be good neighbors by doing the diligent work on city-owned properties and open spaces with vegetation management, opening our access ways for fire engines, making sure our water supply is good. Do us a favor and be a good neighbor and help us by doing your work, and if you do live in one of these assessments, we'd even sweeten the deal by picking up your vegetation for you and chipping it for free. So that's kind of the angle we're doing as our community engagement grows.
Your community engagement has been phenomenal. Very, very grateful. Entire district is very grateful for your availability and information sharing. I'm happy to move this forward when the time comes. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. If you could, I guess, pull up Slide 10. And it's one is insurance and then another. So just to be clear, the question I had, you pretty much answered it, but I just want a further clarification. So there's these new state maps, and then ours, and then for logistical purposes, we're expanding, but none of that would trigger an automatic rise in insurance rates based on what I'm hearing?
Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Friedman, that's correct, and in fact, to put some weight on my point earlier, the insurance companies have not been paying attention to these maps for years, hence their rates going up before these maps have even been amended or on the books.
I just wanted to make that point crystal clear, that, because the public might say, well, why did you even expand it beyond the state into this? We appreciate logistics, but you're raising my rates. That's not going to be the case.
Correct.
And then the only other, the other question I have, and it may be a little bit, that during the budget, Councilmember Jordan proposed that, and we approved it, the coastal high fire assessment district, similar to what's in the foothills, to go forward that process and see where it leads. How, if any, would this, would these new maps relate to that or give input to what the district might be?
Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Friedman, I think most importantly for us is that our CWPP maps existed before the LRA maps came down on March 10th, but they largely looked at and followed what we had already put in place. And so it's important to note that really what CAL FIRE did was validate our local concerns and validate our local knowledge and understanding and expertise in the areas. One thing that might be important to the community, by the way, is that you'll see a couple of holes, especially over in the Veronica Springs area. For the community that's looking at this later, those holes are county-owned properties. And so, again, we updated our local responsibility area maps, but that's a perfect example right there of that hole, and you think, oh, is that not hazardous? No, in fact, that's county or state responsibility areas, and what's really important is that we have been working with all of our partners, whether that's Montecito or the county. And so we don't have any major lines of differentiation between jurisdictions. If we were to pull up the county's map, it would overlay perfectly as to the exact same fire hazard. In other words, the county looked at our maps, we looked at theirs, and made sure we were on the same page. But what it really did was it validated what we already had four years ago as a concern.
And so with that effort, this validates it and informs in a positive way whatever the future boundaries might be that would be proposed to the public?
Exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, very good. Are there any speakers online for this item, Madam Clerk?
No, Ms. Ray.
Okay. With that, we'll go back to council. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. So again, I'm just so grateful for your expertise and willingness to meet with the public. I mean, some of those meetings were multiple times in a week, and some with the county, and some with cities, and different districts, and, you know, you're not just helping the community prepare, but then you're going in and you're protecting that same community and the establishment of trust and being so available and with difficult things. I mean, there's a lot of fear in the room, and especially with what's recently happened. And Mr. DeGiulio, what you just said is exactly right, that we have this ahead of all of these major disasters, and Paradise, and Eaton, and Palisades, and it really does build trust with the community and in difficulty and pointing out that it's hazards and that we're ahead of them, and your expertise, too. I mean, the wind directions, our canyons, the way everything interplays here, and your local knowledge and expertise on that. So I just really, really wanted to give appreciation for that. I think, I'm happy to move approval of this as recommended with thanks, but I'm also thinking it might be time to bring back the assessment district to look at the boundaries, you know, to include that, the fees. I think, really, I hear a lot of people in the extreme high fire who would be willing to pay so much more if they could get more help. And so that, and then also the possibility of more public-private partnerships with neighborhood associations who are, you know, they're putting their dollars in and they're looking for expertise and help in the other way, too. And I think, given all the disasters that have happened, it's kind of, the time is good to have that conversation and to increase those assessments, I think, or have, bring it back for discussion, if that's.
I think, Councilmember Sneddon, one of the recommendations is to give direction for us to begin the administrative process for the coastal fire zone assessment district, and I think we can maybe talk to the consultant to see about sort of, could we... And I think we can maybe talk to the consultant to see about, sort of, could we, as part of that scope of work, could he or she redo the assessment district up in the hills? Or do we want to look at, you know, potentially doing a new election to increase the assessments and starting that process? I think we can do that as part of that scope of work.
Thank you so much. I think, I think with that, I'd be happy to incorporate that recommendation into B and move recommendations A and B with the recommendation that we include some further assessment of the high fire and extreme high fire hillside zones.
Councilmember Sneddon, I think it would be more appropriate to just say, engage in the conversation with the engineer of record on that?
Okay, that's what I said. Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, so that's a motion, a second, thank you. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. You can take that slide off, right? Yeah, right? No, but leave it there, really. So, you know, if somebody's staring at that for a long time, you know, they could be saying like, you know, what the heck's going on in those donut holes, right? And just, you know, when we're looking at, you know, because all we have is time and money, but we're looking, when we're looking at the out decades, you know, it's pretty clear that the lines are moving into where the people are living. And, well, they're already there, but they're continuing, if you're not in there right now, you're in one of those donut holes there, the lines are coming your way. So in 100 years from now, 50 years, whatever, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be unreasonable to think that those, you know, that white area that's over by Campano, or that's probably down in the valley there, and the one that's at the top of the hill on Creo, you know, those are going to be brown too. Those are going to be that color. And if you're in one of those, you certainly should be worried that, what way is the wind blowing that can't affect me, right? Not much choices anymore. Any way the wind blows, you're, you're pretty much out of luck. One thing I think we do a poor job at, and I struggle with that too, so I'll just say, you and I do a poor job at, is trying to figure out how to get much of this work out of our hands and into the neighborhoods, at the neighborhood level. I mean, I just went through with the Mesa neighborhood, trying to figure out who, who all the representatives were for what neighborhood associations still exist in this city. And of course, you know, people age out, pass on, neighborhood associations go away, they resurrect, and one of the Maces is a little resurrected now. But it's pretty clear to me that, you know, now's a great time to be fire-safe counseling, that's, that should not be city-driven, that needs to be neighborhood-driven. Now's a pretty good time to get out information, to stay ahead of, ahead of the curve, so to speak. That, again, we only have so many people, they have so many roles, and they have to go fight fires when fires are fighting, that, again, there's a role for those neighborhoods. And I just, there are neighborhoods that could potentially be affected, that have no neighborhood associations. There are other ones that have functional ones, there are other ones that have dysfunctional ones, or, you know, they're only focused on one thing, like red tile roofs and stucco walls. But I, you know, I'd love to work on that going forward, on how to both cultivate and maintain really good working engagement with neighborhood associations, particularly for these type of things, whether it's fire, evacuation, other natural disasters, helping your elders around the neighborhood, like, you know, Mayor Rouse and his neighborhood, being able to help him. But, but just, there's a lot that, there's a lot that can be done, and I think the dynamics of where city municipal, municipality governments could be everything to everybody, that day has come and gone. And part of that is us taking some responsibility for what's going on with our neighbors and with our hoods in general. So, I'm going to annoy you with that thought going forward, as I continue to work on it, but I'm not much in touch with some areas of the city that, that have their own associations and how they do, but I think there should be some emphasis from the city to at least reach out to them and say, there's some opportunities for you to get, to help yourself get ahead of the curve too, and not wait for me to knock on the door and say, I'm here from the government, and I'm here to, here to help, right? Thanks.
All right, very good. Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion to the motion? And Madam Clerk, are you ready to roll on that?
Yes, we have, and please correct me as needed. Councilmembers Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Friedman, to move recommendations A and B with staff direction to engage in conversation with the engineer of record regarding further assessment for high fire and extreme high fire zones.
Does that work, Ms. Connect?
Yes, I would just say that instead of high fire and extreme high fire, I would say with the wildland assessment district, wildland fire assessment district.
Wildland fire assessment district, thank you.
Okay, so, to repeat here, motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Friedman, to move recommendations A and B with staff direction to engage in conversation with the engineer of record regarding further assessment regarding the fire, the wildland fire assessment district. Okay? Please go ahead and vote.
Motion passed, you dance, we thank you very much. Move on to item 19. You had read that under the record, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, did we want to take a quick break before we started that item?
Want to do a break?
I think so, yeah.
Is that what you guys want to do? Madam Clerk, Madam Administrator wants to do it. So, let's be back here at 4:15, please.
Let's reconvene on this. And Madam Cork, would you read the next item in item 19, please?
Yes, item 19, Single Family Development Streamlining.
All right, very good. Before we get started, I'll announce that we have some speaker slips for folks that are here. And for people that want to raise their hand online, we'll give you until 4:30 and then we'll get cut off the public speaking at that point in time. And we'll go on Ms. Kokinda.
You're not Ms. Kokinda. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Ted Hamilton-Roll, Acting Design Review Supervisor. And joining me is Ellen Kokinda, Acting City Planner. I also want to acknowledge that the SFDB Chair, Jennifer Lewis, is in the audience for questions if need be. We're here today to give you a preview of the Single Family Development Streamlining project and request your initial feedback on this major work effort by the Community Development Department. We're here because we've heard from the community that things need to change. Homeowners tell us that they're frustrated by the complexity of the planning process for home improvement projects and the delays that can result. We are experiencing an overburdened review process. The city spends an inordinate amount of time and resources on minor projects that often have little to no neighborhood impacts but take up space on public hearing agendas. City Council has heard the community's feedback and in 2022, the Land Development Team Oversight Subcommittee directed staff to make the process simpler and more efficient in response to community needs. For today's discussion, we will brief you on the project's background, provide an overview of the proposed changes to the process and code, and request your feedback. This is a briefing session and as such, we are not requesting a formal decision or action today. Instead, our intent is to get your initial feedback prior to releasing the full package of amendments for public review. The first major component of this project is to streamline the Single Family Design Board, or SFB, process. As you may recall, back in 2020, there was a Community Development Process Improvement Study by the NOVAC Consulting Group. And the NOVAC report recommended eliminating the SFB or streamlining its process. We know that the community would not want to eliminate the SFB, therefore, we are proposing to make streamlining improvements instead. Currently, the SFB is overburdened. The board sees almost three times more applications than the Historic Landmarks Commission and twice as many as the Architectural Board of Review. So by reducing the number of projects that require SFB review in the first place and increasing the number of administrative approvals for minor projects, we aim to make SFB's project count align more closely with ABR and HLC. The story of how we got to an overburdened SFB starts before the board was created. In the decades leading up to SFB's establishment in 2007, the community was experiencing a boom of large, single-family houses being built, which many people thought were too big for the neighborhoods. House size and floor area ratio, or FAR, were the dominant conversations at City Council in the creation of the SFB. Today, the Municipal Code and the SFB guidelines are explicit about SFB's objective of ensuring single-unit residential development is compatible with a surrounding neighborhood in size and design. Over the years, SFB purview has grown due to the adoption of the new zoning ordinance, otherwise known as Title 30 of the Municipal Code, which added designer view triggers that aren't always related to SFB's primary goal, like the review of minor zoning exceptions. And starting in 2018, the adoption of a new ADU ordinance in response to state law added more projects to SFB's plate. Acting on the NOVAC report's recommendations, staff began targeted public outreach to stakeholders in the SFB process along with project data analysis in early 2023. We chose to pursue targeted outreach versus broader community outreach because we specifically wanted to hear from those who had been through the SFB process. We started by sending a survey to homeowners and applicants to ask about their experience and what they thought could be improved. Then, we held a series of focus group meetings with planning consultants, board members, and architects, and presented what we learned to Planning Commission and SFB. Our 230 survey respondents told us that the SFB process added excess time, money, and heartache to their projects. I want to hit home that single-family projects tend to be the most emotional ones that we interact with because we're talking about people's homes and their dreams for their homes. It makes sense that SFB reviews so many projects because there are far more single-family houses in the city than other types of buildings. Single-unit residential zones, shown in yellow on the map, make up 57% of the city's land area excluding the airport. And the purple-hatched overlay that you see in the hillside and over on the mesa is the Hillside Design District, which makes up about 44% of the city's land area. Now, any exterior alterations in the Hillside Design District, this purple overlay, are required to be reviewed by SFB. And here's a list of the SFB triggers. This isn't meant to be red line by line. The point is to understand that within the large area of the city that we showed on the previous slide, this is the long list of designer view triggers that applies. And although there are over 35 designer view triggers for SFB, two of them make up the lion's share of projects: projects in the hillside and alterations and additions to upper stories. This graph comprised of SFB project data from a three-year period shows that half of all SFB projects, that's this piece here, are triggered for review simply because of their location in the Hillside Design District. And a quarter, that's this piece here, are triggered for review because of proposed alterations or additions to upper stories. And these are the remaining triggers that are less frequently used. When we broke down the three years of projects into categories based on their scope of work, we saw a striking result. Almost half of all projects, about 45%, are for alterations only with no change in square footage. This is attributed to the catch-all nature of the Hillside Design District trigger. While it catches the biggest projects like new houses and large additions, it also catches the small projects like minor rear additions, window replacement, and repairs in general. Given this finding, we see an opportunity to significantly reduce the number of alterations-only projects that SFB reviews in order to focus their time and attention back on the more impactful projects like new two-story houses. Planning Commission supported this concept when we presented it to them in 2024. We have three main goals for this project. First is to reduce red tape and exempt small projects from public hearings. Second is to streamline the public hearing process by consolidating the SFB process from two approval hearings into one. And third, to make zoning amendments that provide more flexibility for home improvements. This project will not eliminate the SFB or even significantly reduce its purview. Instead, the goal is to make measured, common-sense changes that help staff get to yes on more projects. Key project actions include updating the SFB code and guidelines and incorporating complementary amendments to the zoning ordinance to ease up on restrictions and give homeowners more flexibility. To take minor projects out of public hearings, we propose to exempt alteration projects from designer view as long as they don't result in new floor area and they must match either the existing architectural style or propose a new cohesive design style as set forth in the Single Family Residence Design Guidelines. In addition, minor hardscape and landscape projects would be exempt as long as they don't trip the grading threshold of 50 cubic yards. Here's an example that applies the concept of exempting alterations-only projects. The existing mid-century home in the top image needed a renovation to replace its aging windows, roof, exterior finishes, and the result is in the bottom image. There was no change in square footage, only this cosmetic exterior upgrade and an interior remodel. Under the current process, this project required consent review due to the number and extent of the changes proposed. However, under the proposed process, this project would not require a public hearing since it only involved exterior alterations and the resulting design style is cohesive and consistent with the design guidelines. If these amendments are adopted, we anticipate at least a 21% reduction in the number of SFB projects overall. Note that there is little change to the share of projects reviewed at full board, that's the section in red here, demonstrating that we are not proposing changes that would remove the most significant projects from full board review. We're talking new second-story additions, new hillside houses, and major site work. Another major streamlining component is to consolidate the SFB review process from two approval hearings into one. The current process requires both project design approval and final approval. Project design approval, or PDA, is the main SFB approval and the one that counts for state permit streamlining purposes. The term "final approval" can be misleading to the public in that it is only the approval of final project details, not the main approval of the project. So to streamline the process, we propose to eliminate the final approval hearing and appeal to Planning Commission while consolidating some of the requirements for final approval into project design approval, including a more robust staff-level process for ensuring final approval plans substantially conform to PDA. This has multiple benefits and it addresses one of the NOVAC report recommendations for streamlining. Since final approval is appealable, it confuses the public as to which approval step is the most important to appeal. PDA is the main approval and the appropriate appeal point for topics like project size and compatibility with the neighborhood, while the narrow purview of final approval appeal does not often address those items. In addition, appeals involve multiple city departments and are heavily subsidized by general fund monies. Final approval also presents problems with meeting the five-hearing limit for housing projects set by the Housing Crisis Act. Most jurisdictions only have one approval step and one appeal
Acting Design Review Supervisor, and joining me is Ellen Kokinda, Acting City Planner. I also want to acknowledge that the S F D B Chair, Jennifer Lewis, is in the audience for questions if need be. We're here today to give you a preview of the Single Family Development Streamlining Project and request your initial feedback on this major work effort by the Community Development Department. We're here because we've heard from the community that things need to change. Homeowners tell us that they're frustrated by the complexity of the planning process for home improvement projects and the delays that can result. We are experiencing an overburdened review process. The city spends an inordinate amount of time and resources on minor projects that often have little to no neighborhood impacts but take up space on public hearing agendas. City Council has heard the community's feedback, and in 2022, the Land Development Team Oversight Subcommittee directed staff to make the process simpler and more efficient in response to community needs. For today's discussion, we will brief you on the project's background, provide an overview of the proposed changes to the process and code, and request your feedback. This is a briefing session, and as such, we are not requesting a formal decision or action today. Instead, our intent is to get your initial feedback prior to releasing the full package of amendments for public review. The first major component of this project is to streamline the Single Family Design Board, or S F D B, process. As you may recall, back in 2020, there was a Community Development Process Improvement Study by the NOVAC Consulting Group, and the NOVAC report recommended eliminating the S F D B or streamlining its process. We know that the community would not want to eliminate the S F D B, therefore, we are proposing to make streamlining improvements instead. Currently, the S F D B is overburdened. The Board sees almost three times more applications than the Historic Landmarks Commission, and twice as many as the Architectural Board of Review. So by reducing the number of projects that require S F D B review in the first place and increasing the number of administrative approvals for minor projects, we aim to make S F D B's project count align more closely with ABR and H L C. The story of how we got to an overburdened S F D B starts before the Board was created. In the decades leading up to S F D B's establishment in 2007, the community was experiencing a boom of large, single-family houses being built, which many people thought were too big for the neighborhoods. House size and floor area ratio, or F A R, were the dominant conversations at City Council in the creation of the S F D B. Today, the Municipal Code and the S F D B Guidelines are explicit about S F D B's objective of ensuring single-unit residential development is compatible with a surrounding neighborhood in size and design. Over the years, S F D B purview has grown due to the adoption of the new zoning ordinance, otherwise known as Title 30 of the Municipal Code, which added design review triggers that aren't always related to S F D B's primary goal, like the review of minor zoning exceptions. And starting in 2018, the adoption of a new A D U ordinance in response to state law added more projects to S F D B's plate. Acting on the NOVAC report's recommendations, staff began targeted public outreach to stakeholders in the S F D B process along with project data analysis in early 2023. We chose to pursue targeted outreach versus broader community outreach because we specifically wanted to hear from those who had been through the S F D B process. We started by sending a survey to homeowners and applicants to ask about their experience and what they thought could be improved. Then, we held a series of focus group meetings with planning consultants, board members, and architects, and presented what we learned to Planning Commission and S F D B. Our 230 survey respondents told us that the S F D B process added excess time, money, and heartache to their projects. I want to hit home that single-family projects tend to be the most emotional ones that we interact with, because we're talking about people's homes and their dreams for their homes. It makes sense that S F D B reviews so many projects because there are far more single-family houses in the city than other types of buildings. Single-unit residential zones, shown in yellow on the map, make up 57% of the city's land area excluding the airport. And the purple hatched overlay that you see in the hillside and over on the mesa is the Hillside Design District, which makes up about 44% of the city's land area. Now, any exterior alterations in the Hillside Design District, this purple overlay, are required to be reviewed by S F D B. And here's a list of the S F D B triggers. This isn't meant to be red line by line. The point is to understand that within the large area of the city that we showed on the previous slide, this is the long list of design review triggers that applies. And although there are over 35 design review triggers for S F D B, two of them make up the lion's share of projects: projects in the hillside and alterations and additions to upper stories. This graph comprised of S F D B project data from a three-year period shows that half of all S F D B projects, that's this piece here, are triggered for review simply because of their location in the Hillside Design District. And a quarter, that's this piece here, are triggered for review because of proposed alterations or additions to upper stories. And these are the remaining triggers that are less frequently used. When we broke down the three years of projects into categories based on their scope of work, we saw a striking result. Almost half of all projects, about 45%, are for alterations only with no change in square footage. This is attributed to the catch-all nature of the Hillside Design District trigger. While it catches the biggest projects, like new houses and large additions, it also catches the small projects, like minor rear additions, window replacement, and repairs in general. Given this finding, we see an opportunity to significantly reduce the number of alterations-only projects that S F D B reviews in order to focus their time and attention back on the more impactful projects like new two-story houses. Planning Commission supported this concept when we presented it to them in 2024. We have three main goals for this project. First is to reduce red tape and exempt small projects from public hearings. Second is to streamline the public hearing process by consolidating the S F D B process into, from two approval hearings into one. And third, to make zoning amendments that provide more flexibility for home improvements. This project will not eliminate the S F D B or even significantly reduce its purview. Instead, the goal is to make measured, common-sense changes that help staff get to yes on more projects. Key project actions include updating the S F D B code and guidelines, and incorporating complimentary amendments to the zoning ordinance to ease up on restrictions and give homeowners more flexibility. To take minor projects out of public hearings, we propose to exempt alteration projects from design review as long as they don't result in new floor area, and they must match either the existing architectural style or propose a new cohesive design style as set forth in the Single Family Residence Design Guidelines. In addition, minor hardscape and landscape projects would be exempt as long as they don't trip the grading threshold of 50 cubic yards. Here's an example that applies the concept of exempting alterations-only projects. The existing mid-century home in the top image needed a renovation to replace its aging windows, roof, exterior finishes, and the result is in the bottom image. There was no change in square footage, only this cosmetic exterior upgrade and an interior remodel. Under the current process, this project required consent review due to the number and extent of the changes proposed. However, under the proposed process, this project would not require a public hearing since it only involved exterior alterations and the resulting design style is cohesive and consistent with the design guidelines. If these amendments are adopted, we anticipate at least a 21% reduction in the number of S F D B projects overall. Note that there is little change to the share of projects reviewed at full board, that's the section in red here, demonstrating that we are not proposing changes that would remove the most significant projects from full-board review. We're talking new second-story additions, new hillside houses, and major site work. Another major streamlining component is to consolidate the S F D B review process from two approval hearings into one. The current process requires both project design approval and final approval. Project Design Approval, or P D A, is the main S F D B approval and the one that counts for state permit streamlining purposes. The term "final approval" can be misleading to the public in that it is only the approval of final project details, not the main approval of the project. So to streamline the process, we propose to eliminate the final approval hearing and appeal to Planning Commission while consolidating some of the requirements for final approval into project design approval, including a more robust staff-level process for ensuring final approval plans substantially conform to P D A. This has multiple benefits, and it addresses one of the NOVAC report recommendations for streamlining. Since final approval is appealable, it confuses the public as to which approval step is the most important to appeal. P D A is the main approval and the appropriate appeal point for topics like project size and compatibility with the neighborhood, while the narrow purview of final approval appeal does not often address those items. In addition, appeals involve multiple city departments and are heavily subsidized by general fund monies. Final approval also presents problems with meeting the five-hearing limit for housing projects set by the Housing Crisis Act. Most jurisdictions only have one approval step and one appeal point, which is sufficient for single-family projects and more consistent with state law. The proposed amendment allows for due process and public participation while significantly simplifying the steps involved for the public. In addition to the S F D B ordinance updates, we propose to update the S F D B general guidelines and meeting procedures. Along with a general refresh and reorganization of the guidelines, we propose to simplify and consolidate the long and lofty list of S F D B goals into goals that are more direct, achievable, and in line with S F D B's core mission. We will also significantly bolster process guidance, including the addition of criteria to help determine whether changes to approved plans are in substantial conformance with the original approval. We've been consistently hearing from neighbors as part of the public process that there needs to be better clarity on how to determine substantial conformance. And to help reduce process steps, we also plan to expand administrative staff-level approvals of minor projects, including routine updates for home hardening for improved fire Staff processes admin approvals on a daily basis for small projects like fences, hedges, windows and door changes, and more. To provide context for how this works, when an applicant submits a design review application, staff reviews it and determine which level of review applies, based on the scope of work and guidance in the S F D B guidelines. Based as whether the project meets the criteria for an administrative approval, or whether it needs to be bumped up to consent, which is usually handled by one, sometimes two, board members, or whether it needs the full-board review with all five members. So right now, we're only discussing the administrative approval level. This first-story addition, seen in red hatching at the rear of the house, and to orient you, this is the street where my cursor is, here's the front of the house, here's the rear, here's the addition. This addition required consent review because it was over the guidelines 500-square-foot limit for administrative approvals. We propose to increase that limit to allow admin approval of an 800-square-foot first-story addition and up to 250 square feet on an existing second story. The goal is to allow more flexibility for projects that are consistently, that are obviously consistent with the S F D B guidelines and don't alter the front facade, are a cohesive design style, and are located in consideration of neighbors. This would allow streamlined permits for projects like filling in a second-story porch or adding a bedroom addition at the rear of the house. And it's important to keep in mind that just because we receive an admin approval request, it doesn't mean we have to approve it. Staff regularly refers admin requests to consent or full board if they don't meet the criteria for admin approval or if there's a questionable design. The last project component we're sharing today is zoning amendments that help streamline home improvement projects. These inland zoning amendments include creating code standards from design guidelines, making covered parking optional, and adding provisions for garage conversions, guesthouses, and accessory As you know, the state is chipping away at discretionary reviews, and to counteract that effect, we propose to add standards based on the existing design guidelines to the zoning code so that the community can maintain aesthetic oversight despite state mandates to reduce design review. Many of the guidelines we're proposing to convert to code standards come from the Single Family Residence Design Guidelines. One example is the current guideline that upper-story decks should be 15 feet from your interior lot lines, which this upper-story deck meets, which S F D B has applied consistently over the years and is now proposed as a standard, so that if a project complies, it doesn't trigger design review. Applicants may still propose projects that don't meet the standards, take, for example, a deck on the side of the house, by requesting exceptions reviewed at S F D B. These next few concepts are aimed at providing homeowners more flexibility in how they develop their property. The main change we're proposing is to remove the requirement that parking spaces for single-family residences have to be covered. This stems from A D U law, which allows parking spaces lost due to garage conversions to be replaced with uncovered parking spaces. This allows a ton of flexibility to convert an existing garage or carport to storage, a workshop, or a similar residential use without the owner having to go down a permit path they don't want to or can't afford to do. It also gives property owners building a new house the option to not build a garage, potentially lowering project cost and reducing project size and bulk. Note, we are not, it's only the stipulation that they need to be covered by a garage or carport. Optional covered parking particularly benefits folks with non-conforming one-car garages like this one who want to add parking. Currently, if someone with a non-conforming garage wants to get a permit to alter it, they have to make it fully conforming to current code, which can be quite costly and is sometimes infeasible due to site constraints. The proposed code would allow these folks to get a permit to demolish their non-conforming garage and replace it with uncovered parking spaces, saving time and money. The proposed amendments also allow more options for folks who want to use their garage as something other than parking. Currently, the code only allows your garage to be used either as parking or an accessory dwelling unit, with no flexibility to permit it as anything in between, like a garage or like a storage or workshop. By removing the requirement for parking spaces to be in a garage, the proposed amendments would give people options to keep their garage as-is or convert it to a space that meets their needs, like a playroom and storage, a study, a guesthouse with a full bath, or they can pursue an A D U. Overall, we crafted these amendments to help city staff get to yes on simple projects more quickly and efficiently. Additional get-to-s changes include easier-to-meet open yard, streamline minor zoning exceptions, more flexibility for accessory space, and allowing homeowners to add small sheds in the setbacks. This project has a whole host of benefits. Chiefly, it maintains S F D B's objective of ensuring projects are compatible with the neighborhood. It also cuts down on public hearings and red tape for minor projects, facilitating quicker permitting, which helps staff and the board be more efficient with their time. Lastly, and not least, it enhances homeowners' ability to do home improvements without unnecessary Following today's meeting, we plan to release the draft ordinance and guideline amendments for public review later this summer, then return to Planning Commission in the fall for a formal recommendation back to Ordinance Committee and City Council for introduction and adoption. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. You can learn more about the project and sign up for updates at the website shown on screen. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Rouse, for council member questions and feedback. And to kick it off, we've prepared these three questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, well presented. Since there's not an action item, what we'll do right now is we'll go to our public speakers, and we'll come back to council and combine both comments, our questions and then comments. So we'll start with Brian Johnson, please. You have three minutes at the dials. Be followed by Jared Gordon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and council members. My name is Brian Johnson. I'm the CEO of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors. Our mission includes engaging in real estate-related community issues affecting our members and their clients, who are homeowners, housing providers, tenants, and commercial owners. We're here today in support of the proposed conceptual changes to streamline the single-family residential development process. These updates are an important and overdue step in modernizing our city's approach to home improvement and neighborhood development. As the staff report notes, the current process often pulls even the most modest home improvements, like in-kind replacements or minor additions, into a lengthy and costly design review process. This delays and frustrates owners, straining staff capacity, and diluting the focus of the S F D B. The proposed changes would fix that by removing unnecessary design review triggers, expanding administrative approvals while maintaining accountability, and reducing the number of public hearings, getting homeowners to yes faster, as noted. Importantly, these reforms preserve the S F D B's role in reviewing the larger and more complex projects, ensuring that our architectural standards remain intact, but they also acknowledge that not every project needs a full public hearing or months of processing. With mounting pressures statewide and homeowners seeking more flexible use of their property, streamlining the process is not only smart, it's necessary. So in recognition of June as National Homeownership Month, we urge the council to move forward with these changes. They promote efficiency, reduce barriers, and ultimately support Santa Barbara residents in being good stewards of their homes and their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Gordon, be followed by Fred Sweeney.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, members of the council. I'm really glad to be able to come down here and support staff on this. It's been a big effort. I want to commend them for the efforts they made with outreach, both to homeowners and residents, but also to planners and other members of the design community. I think they spent a lot of time with us upfront and then following up to make sure that as they came through and did these regulations, that they were going to work in the real world. And I think that they've got a package of things here that's moving forward that really looks like it will. I also want to say, I really appreciate the work that the Single Family Design Board does. I wish they would do less of it, and I think that this is going to result in that. I think, like, the general thing I see in these updates is that we're switching over to a system where we're sort of managing by exception. So the things that really need the review, they're going to get the review. And on the other hand, like, if there's something that I want to do that's slightly outside of these administrative guidelines, I still have the option to go to the board for a more thorough review. And that, that's a really good structure and a great way to set up these kinds of guidelines. I think this is going to encourage more people to come forward and get permits for work that ordinarily do things outside of the oversight that we wish some things would have, and to their detriment, too. It's always better to get permits, and if it was easier, more people would do it. And overall, that's a big community benefit. So finally, when I see a regulation that, you know, reflects reality, it's, it's always refreshing. This thing with the garage, not having to have the covered parking, it reflects what I see every single place I go. In the city of Santa Barbara, I'm like the only person I know that actually parks in my garage. And, and it'll really help people get space without having to add second stories, for example. So I think that's going to help a lot of people. So I think this is a great effort. I look forward to participating when we get into the weeds on it at Planning Commission, and I look forward to seeing the end product.
Great. Thank you. Fred Sweeney, followed by Consuelo Benavides.
Mr. Mayor and council, and Mr. Friedman, nice to see you back. Fred Sweeney, retired architect emeritus. First of all, I've been following this for a long time, and I've been pushing for a lot of this. And thanks to Mr. Hamilton Rowe and Ms. Kokinda, who's led the charge with the rest of the staff to get us this far. I'm very encouraged. But I'm also happy that we're still holding on to our review board. As I just found out, there's places like for, for Alexander, Virginia, that don't have review boards, Houston, Texas, most of Texas doesn't have review boards, et cetera. So we're still going to get to be Santa Barbara. But I would like to encourage you, as this goes through the process, to let the public know that this is just one leg of the permitting process. Currently, we have a building department, we have several other departments, that currently, for many of us that work in the industry, there's a perception that they have their empires unto themselves. And it's difficult to work, the Excela project, Excela program that's currently used by the city, in many cases, in my view, is a wall of being able to communicate in a timely fashion with the plan checkers, et cetera. So I hope you convey that to the public. This little piece, this one piece, is a part of a much bigger picture, and I'm hoping that the city administrator will move forward to try to bring down the siloization of all of these departments so that they work better together. I think that's very important. I don't, I, I think we also should let the public know that this isn't going to eliminate people that want big glass boxes on the hillsides. Folks that have enough financial wherewithal can still get what they want. They find ways to get around that, as we've witnessed before. So, but this gives us a chance to maintain our city as a beautiful city, Santa Barbara, which we're known all over the world for, and particularly because of that Riviera that faces the entire town. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I, and I believe the city manager is in the process of desiloing a lot of that.
Okay. Let's hope that moves along. Thank you.
Consuelo Benavides, followed by Derek Booth.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and City Council. I appreciate being able to come and speak with all of you, and I really appreciate listening to the new possible guidelines that everyone is working together on. I'm coming as a concerned neighbor, working on a project, or not working on a project, but objecting a project that is being built next to my home that is a historical home. And seeing that, you know, it's not going to comply or just overshadow what we're doing to conserve and maintain a beautiful place in Santa Barbara is really important. So if I did not hear Mr. Rowe mention anything about the good neighbor guidelines, if we could make sure that that is included in the new proposals, that would be great. Not to have a 5,000-square-foot home next to a 1,600-square-foot home would be absolutely wonderful. As well as, what will determine you, the decision to not, to, to accept a home or property or possible new difference and not, you know, so is it the, is it the guideline? Are the, the, the space, the large, the lot, the, you know, 5,000 square foot? What is it that will determine what is, what is and isn't, you know, before the, to go before the board? As well as, just that it's really important for the public to be able to voice their opinions is really, really important for me. I, I apologize because I wasn't going to speak, but I always have a chance of speaking. I like that. As well as, just thank you for the work that you've done. Thank you for considering everything that we are hoping the, the community to hear and to be heard. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, thank you. I submitted a letter to you that I know at least some of you have read. Thank you very much. And so I won't take long. I want to add my voice of support to the overall project here. I think it's going to be a great asset, both to the development community and the neighbors as well. I want to just highlight two things that I think actually fall in the council's purview. I was a staff member at a local government for 10 years, and so I appreciate the division between procedures and administrative actions and the policy guidance that should support that. With respect to abandoning the appeal of final approval, know that not every designer is fully consistent in making only minor tweaks, and that substantial conformance can very much be in the eye of the beholder. And to ask the staff to make that as an unappealable decision without the council having provided clear policy direction for what you think the city should think is substantial conformance, I think is a shortcoming. And we heard from the Chair of the Planning Commission on our seven-to-nothing successful appeal of final approval, that the lack of such a definition for the city is, is somewhat surprising, certainly was surprising to him, and left far too much room for interpretation and conflict, and multiple meetings that didn't have to happen because nobody had a clear sense of what it actually meant to substantially conform. That shouldn't be for the staff to have to decide, that should be for the council to clarify. The other is just the, the broad purpose of the Single Family Design Board. It is to maintain or preserve neighborhood character, whatever that means. That was the original founding purpose of the Design Board. I'm hopeful, and I think confident, that the streamlining will let them grapple with that question a little more directly. But as we've seen in the neighborhood of the appeal that I was involved in, even neighborhood character has many different definitions, depending on whether you're pushing a project that's two and a half times larger than the average house in the neighborhood, or you're living in that neighborhood. So please, as part of this process, take up that question. What does it mean to preserve neighborhood character? And make sure that the Single Family Design Board actually hears that and understands how they should be acting in accord with that guidance. Thank you very much, and best of luck to you on this.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, or the speakers online.
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll bring it back to council. You may do questions and/or comments all together if you'd like. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. First of all, we were saying up here how much we appreciated your presentation style. Mr. Hamilton Rowe was very narrative and informative and really appreciated it, so thank you. So, question, could, could someone state what is the purview as of S F D B? So, question. Could someone state, what is the purview of SFB? Like, if you're informing the board itself, and you're saying, "That's in your purview," or, "No, that's not in your purview," what is, what is the stated purview of the Design Board?
I'm going to start it off, yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Sneddon. The purview of the Single Family Design Board is the size and design of the house that's proposed. So the Single Family Design Board was established in 2007 specifically to look at single-unit development, and ensure that the, that the houses that are being proposed are not too large, essentially. So they have the purview over the size of the house, the style of the house, and also the site. So any site work that's going on, things like retaining walls, pools, fences, hedges, basically, the entire, the entire lot is under the purview of the Single Family Design Board when a project is proposed, with a couple of small exceptions. Like, if someone's proposing just a fence or just a hedge, then it's just that project element.
Okay, so size, design, style, and site. And that's sort of with the goal of being a good neighbor? Yes?
I would say so. To, through Mayor Rouse, to Councilmember Sneddon. So, yes, ultimately, they're looking at the mass bulk and scale, neighborhood preservation, which we've heard in not only all of our survey, but every conversation we have with community members, with land use planners, with architects, is that it's a really, it's a hard thing to define, neighborhood preservation, because are we defining, because what happens is neighborhoods change, needs change. The city is developing. Every single day, there's a change. We're facilitators of change in the planning division and the building, you know, within community development. So it's hard to take one point in time and say, "This is what the neighborhood should be forever," because, you know, we see a lot of projects that come in who want to propose a second-story addition, or the two-bedroom, one-bathroom home doesn't really work anymore. So I think that defining it for, kind of trying to have a sense of it, knowing that there's going to be some changes over time to how that looks. But I still think that the core of the SFB is to really make sure that we don't have the McMansions, that we're not overdeveloping beyond what is comfortable. And the Good Neighbor Guidelines are a critical element to that, because it's really, you know, do you want to live next door? It kind of, does it pass the test of if you, this was your neighbor, if this development was proposed? And we see a lot of projects that come through that are excellent, they're good stewards of that. And then we see some where, unfortunately, the neighbors and the applicant homeowner can't really come to the same agreement. So I think overall, we're looking at neighborhood preservation, and in the broad context of, does this fit in? How does it look right?
And so I guess that brings up the question, so we'll have some disagreements on that. And I, right, I mean, that's, that's what the board is sort of for, is for that discretion. I know we've had it up here, too, like, what I think of as being a good neighbor, and overbearing, and looking down into my yard and bedroom might be different from sort of a ministerial approval of fitting the bill in the, in the guidelines versus codes. And it's something you briefed us on, and I really appreciate that. So that's, can you speak to that, the difference between guidelines versus codes, and how they would be handled here?
Right. So one of the earlier questions you also made, Councilmember Sneddon, is that the SFB is an aesthetic design board. They're looking at the aesthetics, the exterior of the project, and whatever triggers that, trigger design review, that's their purview. Staff are looking at, does this meet code? Does this meet our municipal code standards, as well as our, all of the city departments and policies? And we're giving feedback on that. That's not for the Single Family Design Board to decide. With every decision, guidelines are tools to help decision-makers understand what's an acceptable project. So it talks, we have so many guidelines. We have these really wonderful Single Family Residence Design Guidelines that includes the tools to review projects for when you're doing a second-story addition, when you're building a new home, when you're building in the hillside. How does this fit in with your neighborhood? Style is for the Single Family Design Board. They need to be a little bit more style-agnostic, but that doesn't mean that you are blind to what else is happening in the neighborhood. So these guidelines are the tools to help the decision-makers, the Single Family Design Board, be able to make the required findings if they can approve a project, or if they say, "This, I can't make this finding, therefore I'm going to deny this project." So the guidelines are the tools to help make the, to craft those decisions and findings. And then the code is code standards that you must comply with. So this is a really important thing. The way our ordinance is currently set up, we just say, almost everything needs design review. We showed you all of those triggers, that there's so many triggers for design review, so it forces every, so many small projects to a public hearing. We're kind of flipping that narrative so that we're creating standards to say, here, these standards came from our design guidelines for Single Family Homes. And we're saying, "Let's put these in the code, because this is how we want people to actually design their projects and elements within their projects." And if they don't, it's like what Mr. Goran said, "If I don't want to do that, then I can still, the exception can be, I can go to a Single Family Design Board for that exception, because I want to do something different." So that can be heard.
This is, this is great. So this sort of addresses what's happened multiple times, when we say, "Well, those are the guidelines," and then people say, "Well, they're just guidelines. I don't have to do them." And this addresses that.
That's correct.
Okay, that I'm actually very, very, thank you.
I was hopeful that you might enjoy this aspect of the concept.
I very much enjoyed this aspect. Thank you. And so then with that, the question of then, what would be the appeal? Is you're suggesting, or this ordinance is suggesting, that it, the appeal point would be earlier, when it could actually make a difference, rather than later? And what the appeal point would be, if you could just sort of reiterate that?
That's correct. So with this project, we plan to sort of consolidate the SFB review process from two steps into one. And part of that is taking some of the requirements that are needed for final approval and putting those on project design approval. And with that, project design approval will sort of become more robust, and more of those issues, like the, not only the size, bulk and scale, but also the architectural details, the colors, materials, all of that will be part of the project design approval, and that will be the appealable action. And we think that's, that's critical, especially for Single Family projects, where a final approval is often just looking at, you know, the paint colors, looking at the driveway materials, et cetera, where there's really not a whole lot to actually look at. So we think that by consolidating the approvals, that offers a much more robust, meaningful appeal opportunity.
Earlier on, before they've invested so much.
Correct, yeah.
And then the question came up, and I had this question, too, about substantial conformance. And we've had appeals like that before, where we're trying to decide, is it substantially conforming or not? So what happens if there is disagreement on whether that was substantially conforming or not? Is, is there a way to appeal that, even though that's not the best time? But is that purely ministerial decision that's not appealable?
Councilmember Sneddon, are you referring to current process, or what's proposed?
Proposed.
Okay. Under the proposed code, what would happen is, after project design approval, an applicant would submit to the building department. And at that point, staff would be looking at the plans that received project design approval, and ensuring that the building plans match, or are, you know, substantially conforming. So at that point, we would be, and we do this every day, all the time, anyway. It's part of a standard building code review. But given the community concern, we do see an opportunity and want to add some guidance for ourselves and for the public on what it means to substantially conform.
So that'll be defined?
That'll be better defined in the code, or in the guidelines.
Yes, and Councilmembers, and so that's really something that has been such, you know, we discussed, Mr. Hamilton Rowell mentioned at the beginning, we did very targeted outreach to homeowners, applicants, land use planners, design professionals. We really didn't talk to the community at large. But we've heard so much through the development review process of certain projects, that having that guidance on substantial conformity would be really helpful, because they say, "Well, you know, you and Ted might know this, but how does the, you know, as staff, change? How do we really document that? And how can we make it very clear of what that's going to be?" And the kicker with final approval is that there's really no way, if you have an action that is, that the Single Family Design Board makes, you have to allow an appeal process. So there's no way to get around that. We were trying to come up with different strategies. And we also want to recognize that, even though we're going to be proposing this to be a ministerial action through the building permit process, we might say, "Hey, I don't feel comfortable with this. I'm going to refer it, not for a decision, but for comments by the Single Family Design Board." So we, you will see that coming forward through the, assuming that Planning Commission, and you and Planning Commission are supportive of this concept, that that would be built in that referral process, so that it could go back at a hearing, but not a formal decision. But it's really the guidance to say, "Okay, does this meet it?" And I think what we would likely be more conscious of are the ones that are the really controversial projects. These are, you know, we know that we're going to have to look very closely to make sure, does, how does this work? What was the decision? What were the intentions behind the decision? And that's why even, just like, what are the findings? We really need to make sure we have good findings of what are conditions of approval. It's all very important as we kind of go through the process, so that we're really clear and locked in on what is the intention of that decision.
Thank you. And I know when we had our briefing, I individually asked you about individual projects, and how they would have gone differently if we were using this process versus our current process. And I can see that there would be improvements, but then also, there still could be appeals if, if the community doesn't, okay. And then adjacency to a historic structure, is that still ministerial approval, or does that go into SFB?
So the, the way that ordinance works now, and how it would be proposed to work, is that if you trigger Single Family Design Board, or, you know, and we, there's a project, and you're adjacent to a historic resource, we always submit, or I say, we, our planning division, through our architectural historian, Nicole Hernandez, will issue a memo to the Single Family Design Board. And that memo will include, your, this project neighbors a historic resource, here's the resource, here's the significance report, so they have, so the Single Family Design Board has all the information, or there could be a string of historic resources along a street that might be included. And then it's, the architectural historian is not making a decision, but we always include guidelines. We have very, I mean, we have guidelines for almost everything in the city, but we have guidelines for new construction next to historic resources. So there's a portion of one of our guidelines that we always share with the Single Family Design Board. And as I mentioned, those guidelines are tools for decision-making. So if you are next to a historic resource, you have those tools to help, again, how do we look at this in terms of the pattern of development in the neighborhood? How can we be conscious? What materials can be used? What, there's just a lot of support there, that the board doesn't have to operate as, without any support.
And those guidelines would be standards in this current, because that's where we run into the trouble with the guidelines, that people are like, "That's a guideline."
So that's a little bit different, because it applies to not just the Single Family Design Board, but we could be anywhere in the city next to a historic resource. So those, again, we have at least 20 sets of design guidelines for different geographic areas in the city, for different boards, the ABR, HLC, Single Families. So this applies broadly to all, and this effort is really just focused on Single Family.
Okay. And I think that might be something to tackle later, that those guidelines become standards, that if people want to go outside those standards, they can go through a process. But we keep bumping up against that. Like, these guidelines are so good, and so thoughtful, and so thorough, and then people can ignore them because they're just guidelines. So that's, that's a comment there. So just comment, I love everything about the garages. I mean, thank you, thank you, thank you. I mean, the world has changed. People want to age in place. People want work-life balance. They want it to be any number of things, and to allow that flexibility is really treating people in the community like grownups, able to make their own choices about how to use their internal space that doesn't change the neighborhood character, or how things look, or anything else. So I think that is a long time coming, and really, really grateful to that, for that. And we talk a lot about that aging in place, and expanding your family, and with the cost of living and all those things. So, and the covered parking, I think, is something, way of the past. There's a lot of, especially on the hillsides, these tiny, tiny, tiny garages that, like, not even a Prius will fit in anymore, but you're required to park in it and not use it for anything else. And it's like, this is sort of like an acknowledgement of the silliness of some of the things, and allowing flexibility. So I really thank you for that. And then I do think, you know, if you're adding a second story, and you're on a hillside, and you're looking down into someone's, you know, backyard, or the things that have come up in appeals, I like that we can still address that separately, if needed. So, and the only other comment I would have is to, as you're going around and asking people who have been through the process, I think it'd be really great to also ask people who've been through the appeal process, the appellants, of what their experience was as well. Like, did they, did they feel they knew how to go through the process, or what to even write in their appeal, or at what point was supposed to be the time when they were supposed to have raised something? Or I think it'd be very helpful to get their feedback as well, because we want the process to work for everyone. And there's a lot of frustration, which I think you've addressed here. So really, thank you. I'm excited for this to go out and get the feedback from the public.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. First, first of all, great presentation. I concur with the comments, very easy to follow. It was a complex issue, and you were able to really outline it in a easily digestible manner. So great job. I just wanted to follow up. Councilmember Sneddon had most of my questions, but in particular, on the change to, for the project design approval, making that the appealable hearing. That's a great move, because then the public really knows, "This is our hearing," to really lay out all the issues. It takes away some of the ambiguity or lack of clarity, where they think they could appeal at a later time. So then the public has, has more resources, and they will know to spend more attention on that one hearing. But Mr. Booth's letter and comments today, I just wanted to fully, you went through it, but just to clarify, because there was an appeal in their neighborhood that did go to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission overturned on a 7-0 vote. So could you just walk through the new process for an example like that? It would no longer go to the Planning Commission, but it would go to, it would go to the staff to make the determination, but then the staff has a number of different options. Could you just go through those again, because I think this is a very important point?
That might help, yeah. We actually have a slide we can share that can kind of help illustrate that. Thank you. Okay, so this is going through the steps of the current SFB process versus what's proposed. So currently, the process consists of concept review, project design approval, and final approval. And you can kind of see the level of detail at each step along the way. The proposed process, and both of, both project design approval and final approval are appealable. Proposed process takes away the final approval hearing and appeal, and focuses attention on project design approval. So at this stage, this is the only appealable action. In determining substantial conformance at the building permit stage, staff would be verifying whether the plans that are reviewed at this project design approval step match what was approved. And at that point, they would be able to, I'm sorry, can you?
Yeah. So ultimately, once someone's able to submit for a building permit, that's when, again, it would be staff's role to look at whether or not the project substantially conforms. We're not, that's a ministerial action, so just by making it a ministerial action, it's not appealable to the Planning Commission. But the way that we've drafted this, if we get to the building permit, and there are changes, you know, that we've, we've got a project, they're dealing with changes, we can all... you know, that we've, we've got a project, they're dealing with changes, we can always refer to, back to a hearing at the Single Family Design Board and say, what do you, do you believe this substantially conforms? So that gives the, the members of the public the opportunity to have some oversight over that. It allows the board to be able to review it, to weigh in on that opinion, but it doesn't give them the action. It would still be, we would draft it as the Community Development Director ministerial decision. And ultimately, staff makes, we're looking, every development project that has to go through the planning entitlement process, staff review these projects for substantial conformance in the building permit. Because those plans generally have to match. And we know sometimes there are little changes. The majority of projects go through fine, they're the same projects, or they might have minor tweaks here and there. These are totally acceptable. But it's the bigger ones. It's the ones where the mass and the bulk and the scale change, that that's the ones that we have to be really, we, we don't want to be allowing those things to go through without, again, saying, hey, you might, you might need a whole new project approval. If you start changing the mass, the bulk, and the scale, you're going to lose your approval because you were approved with one thing. And we're going to send you back to a public hearing for revised project design approval. And so that's really critical to what we've heard from neighbors to really gauge, like that, we, we need to be in sync. And we need clarity on substantial conformance that's drafted so that there's transparency and clarity on what that means and what types of changes are, you know, acceptable and what, again, would need to go back for revised project design approval.
Thank you. That, that's very helpful. So it would, it would allow upfront at the project design, more deliberative and comments from the public because they know that's their one hearing. So you would, you would get more valuable feedback from the public in particular. And then if it does go to staff and it's one of, it's one of these larger projects, let's say, then staff would have the ability to take it to the Single Family Design Board for input where the public could then give their input and then staff could consider that. And then the staff would have a couple of options. One is to say, hey, you're, you're not, you don't substantially conform. Here's what you need to do it. And if you don't, then it would go back through the process.
So to, Councilmember Friedman, one thing is, if it just doesn't match, then we can just easily say, you need to go back for revised project design approval. That means you need a brand-new approval and you might need to pay new fees because it needs a new, we need to look at this again. And this is different than what you were approved for. This is not what you were approved for. So staff can ultimately just say, no, this doesn't pass muster, just go back. It's for the projects that are really gray. Or maybe it's just some small element. Or maybe it's like, you know what, this could have privacy impacts, or I'm not sure about this. And those are the ones that we would send back for referral, for, to the S F D B. Again, it would allow neighbors to say, oh, I, like, give them a chance to, to look at it, to kind of be part of the, the commenting on it. It's that gray area that, again, we want to make sure. But if it just, if it doesn't match, if it's apples and oranges, then that's an easy one where we can just say, no, you have to go back for revised project design approval.
Thank you. I just, I want to spend a little extra time with that because it was such an important point. And I think the comments that we received highlighted the importance of that and not the ability for the public to lose that opportunity on there. So those are the only questions I have. So I'll just go into comments first. Again, want to thank our staff and thank the public. There was a lot of great public comment. Anytime that Jared Goran and Fred Sweeney are in agreement, we should really, we should really pay attention. So I, I think in general, most of all of this, it, it makes a lot of sense. It's common sense on a lot of it. It fits in line with what we're trying to do at the city to make our processes more effective, improve the customer experience, and also make our workload for our staff more effective so they can really work on other projects rather than getting put through, through a loop, through multiple hearings, which involve multiple departments, including our city attorney and others, that would be avoided. The, the ability to, in the garages in particular, to make changes without having to make an A D U is huge. Extra room. There's a lot of working from home now. And that's, that's an ability that people don't have necessarily right now to, to change that room. And now they will have that ability. It also does keep the Single Family Design Board a decision-maker in these larger cases where there could be neighborhood compatibility or precedent-setting issues coming in. So that's very important because it, it keeps the intent of the original 2007 creation of the design board. There was a lot of issues in Mesa in particular that were going. So I think it keeps that original intent. And it also is with the, the NOVAC report, the Long Reach Fund Oversight Committee, that we are implementing a lot of the recommendations from the NOVAC report. This one was, we, we, the city implemented a lot of the more easier ones over the first few years. And now we're getting into a little more difficult ones. And this is a step in that direction. But it also isn't just rubber stamping the NOVAC report. It's, it's showing that there, there is nuances to our community that the NOVAC report didn't quite capture, and we're taking those into consideration. Because I think one of the recommendations, or one of the things they put out there was to eliminate the Single Family Design Board. I think you even said that in your staff report. And that was off the table. So I think it shows the nuance and the care that we're putting in there. And so then I will close my comments. I mentioned common sense before, so I'd like to give you a quote from a good old Tom Paine in Common Sense himself. And it is, "Society is produced by our wants, government by our wickedness. The former promotes our happiness positively by uniting our affections, the latter negatively by restoring our vices. And I must say that it's a great day in Santa Barbara when parking your own car in your own driveway is no longer considered a government vice."
Got to get you a new hobby. Mr. Jordan.
I got one for you, but you're going to have to wait, but I got one for you. And yikes, like, really? You have to get a Lotto ticket tonight. Jared Gordon came to council and said some favorable things, right? I had the same reaction. So I'm sure they bribed you with your exhibit in the staff report, right? So there's a lot to love here today. Just one question. I just wanted to be really clear on, on something doesn't smell right when staff's looking at it, like for final or just somewhere through the process. When staff refers back for comments or review to the Single Family Design Board, it would be noticed again to the neighborhood, that meeting?
Councilmember Jordan, not necessarily. It would be noticed if it were a full-on revised project design approval, if the project required a mailed notice in the first place. But minor changes or this referral process wouldn't necessarily need to have a mailed notice process. We could look at that. And if that's something council-
Just help me with that because listening to the narrative, it was like, I, I don't remember exactly what Ellen just said, but it was kind of like, well, this is an additional opportunity and for the public to be aware of blah, 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 of the, the staff uncertainty or the gray area or does it, but if you're not noticing the, noticing back to the neighborhood, how, how does that benefit the, the hood?
So, thank you, Councilmember Jordan. So one thing, there's a formal mailed notice. That's the post, the blue postcard, you know, developments in your neighborhood. If anyone has signed up as an interested party, that means that they will always get the Single Family Design Board agenda when a particular item is agendized. So that would be the, you know, the easiest way to capture those who've participated in the process. Anyone who's ever been, you know, if someone submits public comment, we automatically add them as an interested party and that's how they would get, it's that email notice that could be the, the easiest connection point. But I think as Mr. Hamilton Will mentioned, we could look at the option for a mailed postcard notice. Just know that that adds time, like, we have the lead-up time to, to make that happen.
And I think you might, as you go forward with this, maybe, I mean, I know you're still out and about generally, just that might be a concern to mention to the neighborhood-type people or groups that you're talking with and see what their reaction is to that, that, you know, the burden will be a little bit on them to get into the noticing process earlier. You know, none of us like second or third generation participants on a project. I get that too. But, you know, but I, I don't want to sell it as something that it's not, I guess. That's what I'm saying. Okay. Every other one of my comments is better than that. So they're all, they're all good after that. Where to start? On the, the comments of who does that substantially conform? The staff? I think, I don't want it up here. I mean, I don't think anybody wants it up here. We're, we're, well, some of us are not the subject matter experts and see these projects all day long, or we're far enough removed from that process that we're no longer really know what we're talking about with a finger on the pulse. And, and I think there's a, there's a great argument to be made that with, with keeping that with people who are looking at it constantly, whether it's a Single Family Design Board referred back to, or whether it's staff who's constantly working on these projects. I love what you say about, what you said about guidelines, you know, that they, the perfect is style, agnostic, but not be blind to the hood, to the neighborhood. And I think this is going in a direction where, where you, where you have guardrails to keep it from going over the side either way, and you're not so focused on the lanes anymore. And those lanes have become what historically, everybody got to yes pretty easily without, you know, lots of neighborhood upheaval and lots of staff. But the, that, that slide with the 20-some percent that would be exempt all represent historically stuff that went through the process and was always yes. And so why would we keep making things go through the process that are always yes? Those are, those are the, such low-hanging fruit to just grab out of there and relieve everybody of the angst and the misery and the time and the dollars of going through the process. So I think that's, that's where you get. I'm reminded of David Pritchett, who, long, long time ago, for those of us who have gray hair, when he was grousing about the city processes, said, from Pirates of the Caribbean, said, "The code be more like guidelines." And, and that's what we're trying to get away from. We're trying to make the guidelines play their role while making sure the code is absolutely, is absolutely followed. So I think it's on, it's on the right track there. Totally agree with the, the stance that what's out there, anywhere in the city, in a neighborhood, is generally out of touch with where we are now with our processes and codes, whether it's work at home, grandparents in the house, grandkids in the house, you know. It's just, it, it, this starts to reflect the humans involved and not manuals sitting on the shelf in a wall, on a wall and the shelf of a planner that have been sitting there being used for 30 or 40 years and have never changed. So it starts to reflect that. And, and I think that's a great thing to strive for. So, and then totally agree with the change on when the appeal time is. I think particularly because you're, I guess, bolstering up the PDA. You know, you're moving over the, the colors and that kind of stuff. And so that should be, that should be the time when you get that appeal process. So you bolster up the PDA, you don't, you give it an opportunity there to have it substantially complete, really. And then that's your chance to appeal. And then if there's some minor tweaks to make to it, you don't involve a project in a late hit, which is a number one of, number one of all 20 number-one complaints, right? But, but that will help us avoid the late hits on a project while still honoring the process and the goals that we strive for. So I can answer all your questions well. Yep, agree with the goals. Yep, like the, like the solutions you're working on so far. And can't think of anything other than to work on again, other than I think people will start to, when they see the devil in the details, they will start to say, oh, wait, you sold this to me like I might have a chance at the end just to come offer my opinion to a Single Family Design Board who's offering their opinion to a project. And that, that might, that might be a, an occasion to notice back out to the community again. And I certainly get that that costs something, not much, but it costs time, might cost four weeks or a month, given the frequency of the board. So, but I think if, if you feel strongly that it needs to go back for comments, I, I think you really should look at closer whether you should notice or not and what the pros and the cons are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I can be truly brief because I, I think I associate myself with all of the comments that have been made. And I could just, I think I can just say yes. Honestly, I'm really, really happy to see the direction this is going and very grateful for the work that's gone into it. This is, everyone has said, a long time coming and it's no easy thing to accomplish. And I, I hear and agree. There will be much more conversation to come and the devil is in the details and I get all of that. But this is really, really great to see. And it's, it actually is getting me very excited about not just the reforms to the S F D B process, but what comes after that, to the other processes that we know are in need of similar streamlining and reform. And the way that you've managed to thread the needle between knowing the necessity of making these processes more efficient and easier and also maintaining that sort of essential thing that makes us us and that allows us, allows our character to continue. So I just, I think it's great. I'm really excited to see where it goes. And I wanted to say on the mic, again, as my colleagues did, how much I appreciated the presentation as well. This is a lot of complexity here and it was very well done. The questions were answered really thoroughly and, and so my gratitude. I'm excited to see where it goes.
Ms. Hannah Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Would love, love to echo what my colleagues have mentioned. Amazing job with the presentation, very succinct and, and to the point. I'm, I'm very happy to see these proposed changes. I think, you know, most of the time when we're able to provide more flexibility to the homeowner to really make the best use of their property, I think that's a win for, for all of us. I think it's, it's important at the end of the day that, that we are simplifying the process and sort of reducing the headaches and the heartaches all around. So truly, truly very grateful to both community and stakeholders that have engaged in this process and to our staff for engaging these folks. I, I want to echo what I believe Councilmember Sneddon mentioned about bringing in folks into the process who have been through the appeals process. Just want to second that because I, I do think that all of those different perspectives are going to make sure that, you know, we, we craft the, the best changes that we can. So also very much looking forward to, to what comes next. But I've already been hearing feedback from, from folks out of the community that this is something that, you know, most folks are seeing as a very positive change. And so I think, you know, wherever we can continue to simplify the process, I think we can all find some common ground. So great job as always.
All right. Very good. Well, I think the first line on Slide 30 says it all, getting to yes. So that's my drop-the-mic moment. And thank you very much. We don't have any actions on this item. So thank you. Council staff communications, any council member committee assignment reports? Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I attended the ribbon cutting that was put on by the Chamber of Commerce for the Best Western on Upper State with you. And attended the N double A C P Zoom meeting, the elected leaders forum on housing and homelessness. I attended the 50th anniversary of T V S B at Soho. I also attended the opening night of Circus Vargas. Very fun. I recommend everybody to check it out. I attended the No King's Day demonstration on Cabrillo Boulevard. I just was very impressed by the turnout and also thankful for our city staff and P D for being there and keeping the peace. It was, it was really well-attended. I also attended Juneteenth at, at the park and attended the new Vic play, Justice, with Councilmember Jordan. And, well, we were there with our separate parties. And I attended the webinar for the West Side and Lower West Side Community Outreach Meeting, which will be in person tomorrow. which will be in person tomorrow. Thank you.
All righty, any other Committee assignments? Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I also attended the Elected Leaders Forum on Homelessness and Housing, and there is, I will send it through the city attorney. I think there's a QR code to a survey of us as elected leaders on what our top priorities are in the countywide, so there will be an opportunity to weigh on in on that, so please do. And then I also attended the No King's Day, and really, really grateful to law enforcement and to Chief Kelly Gordon for really setting the tone on inviting and welcoming public protest. And it was a very, actually, sort of joyful, almost, event in a way, and felt very safe, and really, really appreciative of that. And then also attended a Hope for the People event, which was, there were a lot of remarks on how great the bandshell is and the sound carries so well, and the space held people really well, and it was sort of a celebration kickoff of how other ways that it could be used in the future. So that was very celebratory.
All right, very good. Well, I concur with Councilmember Sneddon there. We were at the bandshell for Juneteenth, and it really did, it was a nice kickoff for that event. So we attended the Coast Guard changing of commanders, so we have a new commander at our Coast Guard station. Went with Ms. McAdoo to our city leadership, that we have all the cities and the counties get together and chat about stuff. That was some German university students. Sorry you missed that, Mr. Friedman. I was here yesterday. And you guys might have missed the athletic event of the season when I threw out the first pitch for the opening home game with the Foresters. So that was, we can. Now with that, we are going to move back to a continued closed-session item. We will adjourn from there. However, Ms. Gorman, are there public speakers left for the closed-session item?
There are no hands raised for public speakers on right now.
Okay, so with that, we are going to return to closed session, and we say there won't be poured out. We will return from there. Ms. Connect.
And just to be clear, that's item number four-
Item number four, that's correct, on today's special meeting agenda. Special meeting, thank you. Oh, and one more last thought. Mr. Friedman.
I just wanted to close today's meeting in memory of Bernard Hicks, who passed away a few weeks ago. He was a legend over with the Boys and Girls Club, and just cared about our youth like no other in the community for many, many decades. And he's, it's a big loss. I know many in the community knew him, but someone who really did everything he could to keep our youth on the right track with physical education, schooling, and everything. And I know his, he will be missed by many.